Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Councilmember on February 26, 2024. City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Deputy Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve today's meeting agenda.
Back it up.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Thank you, Mayor. There are 13 pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has put in place. Oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to the City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking to items on future agendas will be called. The mayor is authorized in each category to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or to people who are anticipated to speak on items coming in front of the council within the next 60 days. Speakers are allowed up to three minutes to make their comments, and a maximum of three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Abigail Dewis.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and councilmembers. My name is Abigail Dewis, and I'm a land use attorney at the Hillis Clark Firm. We're in Seattle at 999 Third Avenue. I'm also the governmental affairs chair for NAAP Washington State, and I'm speaking this evening on behalf of NAAP Washington State regarding our suggested changes to the city's noise ordinance. You received a joint letter this morning from NAAP Washington State, AGC, and the Bellevue Chamber on this topic. Overall, we support many of the changes that city staff are proposing that are going to your study session tonight. We particularly support the proposed change in bedroom DBA levels, which has been a major hindrance to residential projects in some areas of the city, so we urge you to support that change. We've identified concerns, however, in staff, the staff's proposed changes to the allowed construction hours. Although the modest changes proposed are good, we think that staff should go further to increase the allowed construction hours in the city's existing and future urban areas. In downtown East Main, the Wilberton TOD area, and Bellred specifically, to allow for the most efficient construction. We think extended construction hours in these locations in particular are important to achieve the housing unit and jobs growth the city has set out, and are asking for the hours to be extended to allow construction from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on weekdays, and from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekends. We would be supportive of these changes, applying citywide, but short of that, we request you support the additional construction hours in these areas specifically, because they're supposed to be the most dense areas of the city, and where we think the most development will occur in the coming years. Thank you for your consideration of this important topic.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Sonia Forster. I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Forster, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity. AGC of Washington represents over 800 contractors, subcontractors, and associate members, half of which are headquartered here in King County. These contractors and their employees build Bellevue's roads and bridges, commercial buildings, and large housing projects. I'm here testifying in support of the proposed noise ordinance changes. We appreciate the staff recommendation to modify decibel levels to be consistent across all areas of a residential unit. This is the right direction for both construction costs and noise pollution, and we urge you to support this change. Additionally, we support the citywide increase in construction hours and appreciate the direction taken by staff. However, we would like council to consider an additional hour from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on weekdays, and from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. on weekends, in the areas of downtown, East Main, Wilberton TOD area, and Bellred. The letter you received today from our Coalition of NAAP, Bellevue Chamber, and AGC of Washington outlines the benefits to these additional construction hours: to deliver housing and jobs faster, achieve construction efficiencies, reduce traffic impacts, promote permitting and staff efficiency, and bring construction hours more in line with areas of Bellevue, other major eastside cities, and Seattle. Again, we're grateful to staff for bringing these noise ordinance changes to you today. We hope you can support them with the modification to construction hours that had been proposed. Thank you.
Speaker on the list is Malette Damisse. And Ms. Damisse, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Your time begins now.
Great. Hello, everybody. My name is Malette Damisse. I am a senior real estate project manager at Vulcan Real Estate. I'm here in support today of study session 24213 to modify the construction noise ordinance and actually make it be extended. I've been working in Bellevue for the last four years, working on a variety of projects ranging from commercial buildings and offices, multifamily housing, as well as retail TIs. By extending the noise ordinance hours, the projects will be able to cycle builds much more efficiently, and more efficient cycle times shorten the duration of overall build cycle. If a project team is able to cycle the structural core of a tower one day quicker per floor, for example, on a 40-story building, that equates to 40 days of critical path savings, thus shortening the overall impact of the build to the neighboring properties and the City of Bellevue. Not only would this proposal deliver housing and jobs faster, as well as achieving construction efficiencies, this would reduce traffic impacts since construction workers would hit the road later and achieve parity with other areas of Bellevue and other major eastside cities as they allow construction till later hours. Therefore, please consider passing the noise ordinance to allow construction between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. on weekdays, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Rojas. Looks like Mr. Rojas is joining us virtually. Mr. Rojas, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you. I'm calling, I work with JTM Construction. I'm currently working on the Avenue Bellevue project, where I've been working for the last three and a half years, and I'm in full support of the noise ordinance being extended. I think any time that's offered to contractors throughout the City of Bellevue will be an upside, allowing us more time to continue projects that would otherwise be shortened and have to start the next day. It's a great opportunity for flexibility and overall project scheduling. I've worked in Bellevue for the last 20 years on various projects, this current project being the longest, and one thing that I've noticed is, a lot of times, we will run out of time, specifically with structural elements, which are critical path elements, and something like this, an extension, would help us, again, further the project and cut time in the overall project duration. And yeah, I appreciate it, and I'm in full support of any extension, an hour or more during the week, and an hour on the weekend.
Thank you. That is, did you have further comments?
It's time.
Okay, thank you. That is our third speaker in support of that particular topic, so we will not be able to take any further speakers in support. There are two additional speakers signed up for this, indicating that they are going to share some concern or have opposition, so I will call those folks. Steve Garrett would be the next speaker. Mr. Garrett, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Garrett. I'm the general superintendent of Turner Construction. I'm opposing the allotted hours. I feel they're too limiting, just to 8:00, 8:00 p.m. It's limiting to what we have. We've currently been in the Bellevue market the last 25 years, doing everything with interior tenant improvements to ground up construction. We've been in the Spring District, as well as the latest project was 555, the high-rise tower there on 108th Avenue Northeast. Let me give some specific examples, why I'm opposing just the shortened duration. I think it should be longer. When we start doing structural components of the building, you know, we have service to the building. For example, that particular building had a height, the core, which was a 75 by 75-foot box, and it was roughly 300 or 260 yards of concrete. And when we start in the morning, we try to get the project going, even with a 7:00 a.m. start, by the time we're able to get the acquired equipment to the job site and start doing our work. A lot of times, you know, we have challenges getting material to the project throughout the day, and it really hinders us from being able to finish, especially putting our projects and getting things done within the structural requirements. I would like to say that, you know, extending the hours is great. I think that they should be extended longer. Our crafts are able to get more work done, and it actually shortens the duration of the projects. The 555 Tower was a 36-month-long schedule that could have been reduced by two, two-and-a-half months if we had been able to work longer hours in the day and not got stuck in situations where we had to either not do our work today because we had bad service, or we couldn't get trucking to the job site. It actually prolongs our duration and just our annoyance to the general public. So I'm hoping that you consider amending the noise ordinance, but also hoping that you extend it and taking consideration longer hours outside of 8:00 a.m. And then, for the weekends, the 8:00 a.m. start with the 6:00 p.m. stop would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
City Clerk, I'm counting two speakers who want to change the noise ordinance for certain parts, certain neighborhoods, and three who have spoken about generally just increasing the hours. Is that the same that you have?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The next speaker on our list is Tyler Tonkin. Looks like Mr. Tonkin is joining us virtually. Mr. Tonkin, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and audience. My name is Tyler Tonkin. I'm an executive vice president with GLY Construction, headquartered in the City of Bellevue. I'm here this evening to oppose and comment on study session item 24-13, which is the proposed amendments to the City of Bellevue Code update to the exempt hours for noise construction. And specifically, I'm advocating that an additional hour be added to the proposed amendments so that weekday exempt work hours will be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday exempt work hours will be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Most of my career has been spent building projects in the City of Bellevue, and I considered my opposition to the proposed amendment pretty carefully. I was part of building Bellevue City Hall in 2004. I've worked at Overlake Medical Center continuously for over 20 years, and most recently, I was involved in the West Main Development in downtown Bellevue. I'm acutely aware of the need to be collaborative, public-facing, and appreciative of how the construction process can impact the day-to-day lives of Bellevue citizens. The three main reasons I'm advocating for the amended work hours to be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the work week, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays are day-to-day worker safety being first, rushing to complete work can present safety risks, and large-scale construction activities can regularly, excuse me, take more than 12 hours to complete in a day. Planning, flexibility, and efficiency would be the next reason. It really helps to have the ability to adjust when unexpected disruption occurs, and having another hour beyond what is being proposed can help to minimize the need for frequent and extended work hour exemption permitting. And then finally, predictability. The public in the City of Bellevue can benefit from an enhanced, fixed exempt work hour range where projects can be delivered more quickly. And to restate my opposition and request, please consider making the exempt work hours be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the work week, and 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturdays. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, pardon me, Abraham Ramirez. Mr. Ramirez, if you're joining us online, if you could raise your hand, please. Okay. Next speaker is Anthony Hivia. Mr. Hivia, if you're joining us, if you could raise your hand, please. Thank you. Mr. Hivia, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I live in downtown Bellevue and spend much of my evenings and weekends walking downtown. I'd love to leave the immediate downtown area and make trips to Wilberton or Bellred or beyond without my car, but biking in Bellevue is dangerous. In my years biking here have put me in many close calls and hits with cars, despite all the measures I've taken to make my bike more visible, to make myself more visible, to make sure I'm not biking at night. I've spoken with fellow residents and employees at my favorite businesses in the area. All that have spoken to have expressed support for expanding bike access in Bellevue and recognizing the economic, air quality, safety, and traffic improvements it would bring to our awesome city. In addition, at the December Transportation Commission meeting, 38 people, including former Bellevue elected officials, Bellevue residents, Bellevue workers, and Bellevue visitors, spoke in support of Bike Bellevue versus the 15 in opposition. The narrative here that this is a polarizing issue with equal numbers of people in support and opposition is not true. Bellevue wants this, and we have the policy language and the council direction to make this happen. Please uphold your commitment to the community, to Vision Zero, by empowering staff to implement the safe infrastructure we need according to best practices and expert know-how. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Armand Bilge.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name's Armand Bilge. I've been a resident of Bridle Trails neighborhood for six, seven years now, and I don't have a car. I bike everywhere and use transit. That's how I get around. And so I'm really, really excited about the Bike Bellevue project, because it's going to add really high-quality, on-street lanes, facilities that will help me get around Bellevue, that will help me live my life safer and more happily, but also, more importantly, it will transform our city. And I really want to help us to recognize this, so I'm making an open invitation to everyone. I've got more handouts, I've got handouts, to join me, and we have a group, Eastside Urbanism, on, if you're a rider, a cyclist, on a bike ride, we've got a map here, or a walk. So we've planned a three-mile route that takes us along several Bike Bellevue corridors, and it sort of gives us a chance to experience firsthand, what is it like to be a commuter getting off in Redmond or a Microsoft employee ending their day? Can we entice them to come into Bellevue, to come into Bellred, and spend money on our businesses? Or what about a middle school student who wants to get to the park, or go to karate practice, or go to Kuman to do tutoring or learn more? Can we experience what is it like for these people today, and help us see why Bike Bellevue is so important? How these different corridors will change the daily lives of so many people, including those that live in Bellevue, and those that will soon be coming to Bellevue all the time without cars, because of the amazing new light rail connections that are opening up? So we planned this very nice three-mile route. It starts at, actually, Redmond Technology Station, and it takes us down through Bellred. We take a pause at Highland Park. Highland Park is a great place, you know, there's the park, there's a community center, YMCA. And then from there, we continue to, through Bellred Station, and we finally end up at Mercury's Coffee. And from there, we can either take a bus back or go along the trail to get back to the beginning. And this is very short and very sweet, but along this route, you get to see a lot of stuff. You get to see on the back of the handle, there's like, all these businesses here that we will pass by, all these points of interest, all these apartments, all these things that will now be connected by these bike lanes that also enable scooters, that also calm cars to make it safer to walk. And the other really important thing about experiencing this is that we'll get to, we'll get to see why it's so important that we have a connected network, why just having bits and pieces doesn't work. You've got to have the whole thing. Our engineers at Bike Bellevue, they've done a great job. In fact, one of them, they would like to be joining us, Jay Bachman would like to join us for this ride, too. They've done a great job, so please, support them. Make this happen. This will be transformative for everyone, businesses, me.
The next speaker on our list is Maria Frost, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Frost, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, councilmembers. My name is Maria Frost, and I'm the transportation director at Kemper Development Company. We are deeply concerned about the traffic impacts that are projected to occur in a comprehensive plan under the preferred alternative, both with a full build-out and a 2044 growth scenario. Our interest is not just to have a healthy downtown and a healthy Bellevue collection. We're here for a better Bellevue as a whole. This plan, which contains a disconnect between intended density zoning and the road capacity necessary to support it, will not result in a better Bellevue, but a gridlocked Bellevue. Please take a look at Chapter 11 and Appendix K in the final environmental impact statement. Under the preferred alternative with a 2044 growth forecast, 16 identified intersections will not meet their performance target, and with full build-out, that number increases to 70. These are intersections projected to have such high volumes of traffic exceeding the available capacity to carry it that the numbers are barely comprehensible within typical traffic engineering formulas. Volume capacity ratios aren't always easy to understand in terms of what people would actually experience, so we worked with our transportation engineers to convert the ratios to average delay time, and have included that chart in a letter that I sent to you last week. Under the 2044 growth scenario, drivers are projected to experience delays up to 14 times longer than what they experience today. Still worse, many of these failing intersections are along the same corridors targeted for road diets in the Bike Bellevue plan, which isn't accounted for in the FEIS. In other words, if Bike Bellevue is implemented as proposed, these traffic conditions will be even worse. The queues from these failing intersections will impact bus, freight, and private vehicle travel, will block other intersections and driveways, and will make it difficult and dangerous for pedestrians trying to cross obstructed intersections. People will be upset, and rightly so. How does the FEIS plan to mitigate these impacts? It doesn't. Despite projecting shifts to other modes will not occur, and that citywide driving will continue to increase, the mitigation strategy can be summarized in one overarching message: don't drive. This is not rational, and it's certainly not mitigation. The reality is that these traffic conditions do not support livability in Bellevue. People who drive will choose to divert to other roads, and upon finding that those intersections are gridlocked, too, will find a way to simply not come to Bellevue at all. People will not live, work, or shop in these conditions. Comp Plan Policy TR2 provides that the city aggressively reduce traffic congestion, yet the FEIS ignores the policy direction, relegating capacity improvements to being a, quote, "last resort." Traffic congestion relief, not management, must be a priority, not just in stated policies, but in the projects we pursue. Please consider these serious impacts on traffic and our staff to provide the transportation infrastructure needed to accommodate the planned growth and the vehicular trips it will create, or else modify the plan to reduce the impacts if they cannot be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Abe Willner Martin. Mr. Willner Martin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Abe Willner Martin, and despite my urge to veer from my planned talking points to address what's been said previously, since we haven't had our three speakers on Bike Bellevue, I am instead going to stick to my plan of discussing Vision Zero more broadly. As the Vision Zero website informs us, only 8% of roads in Bellevue are responsible for 80-some percent of serious injuries and deaths in vehicular accidents in Bellevue. Despite that, my house personally is barred on every side by these unsafe roads. I will be frank that I do not believe that the projected three-second traffic increase, as described in many of the traffic studies done by staff, is worth the lives and safety of two-wheeled and two-footed travelers. I simply don't agree with that assessment. Bellevue is currently trending in the wrong direction. We continue to experience more accidents between vehicles and bikes every year, despite the Vision Zero plan. The city has an immense backlog of amazing road safety assessments and projects that have been done by their wonderful staff that they can implement if they choose to fund it sufficiently. As of right now, I do not feel that that funding is sufficient. $500,000 for the entire Vision Zero for one year seems grossly underfunded to me, as evidenced by the fact that none of these backlog of projects are actually getting done. I happen to live near one of the most deadly road collision sites, where there is a semi-permanent roadside memorial next to a bus stop near my house. That's the bus stop I used to get to high school. If there is not a justification in that to make our streets safer by any means necessary, then I do not think that there is a justification to claim that we really believe in Vision Zero in Bellevue. I think that it is vitally important that we decide what our priorities are, and I think that our priority has to be investing whatever funds are required to make this city safe for the people who are most vulnerable. And that is not now, and it never has been, the people in 10-ton metal boxes. It is the people walking on these streets, the children going to Highland Middle School on Bellred, the most dangerous road in town, and it needs to be fixed. Please consider doubling down on your funding for Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you, then.
City manager, is it possible to get our last speaker some of the intricacies of our budgeting process, because we have far more funding going toward projects that provide safe routes that are not listed directly under Vision Zero? So it's hard for people to see that, so maybe you can provide them with that information at some point this week?
Yes, Mayor, we can do that if we have this contact information.
Okay, yes, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is John Zalanas.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome.
Hello, esteemed commissioners. I am John Zalanas. I both live and work here in Bellevue, and I'm here to speak in support of Bike Bellevue. For the past nine days, I have not touched my car. Two Sundays ago, I biked 33 miles while, to and from Green Lake to watch my friend at an open mic night. That's about into dinner, karaoke, and closing down a bar with another friend, and I spent $65 by the end of the night. On Thursday of that same week, I biked 31.81 miles, round trip to Ballard and back, to spend $87 between two restaurants to celebrate a friend's new job. In the past week, I have biked 117 miles and spent a total of $193 at various businesses, for entertainment, while for food and drink, or just for the sake of checking out a business that I thought looked interesting. But there's one thing that one of the, well, all of these places have in common, and it's that they're accessible via safe, bike-friendly infrastructure. And as you can tell by that shared commonality, none of those businesses were located in Bellevue. A grand total of $0 of the money that I spent as a consumer fed back into Bellevue, solely because none of the businesses or places I would like to patronize had the infrastructure that would have made it safe to travel there via bike. To quote Bellevue's Vision Zero website, "From 2013 to 2022, 211 people were seriously injured, and 23 people were killed in traffic while collision on Bellevue's streets." Continuing that quote, "To contextualize this past decade of data, every 16 days, someone was killed or seriously injured on Bellevue's streets. While it is my intention to be cordial, kind, and caring, I need each of you to understand my frustration, shared by my contemporaries, that your staff jumped to action, quickly removing the project manager and delaying the implementation of Bike Bellevue, a project that is specifically focused on improving safety for pedestrians and non-motorists, through the creation of adding 15 miles of safe bike infrastructure over an ethics complaint that had been investigated internally and thoroughly debunked. And I understand that processes have to be And I understand that processes have to be followed, but deciding to actively delay this project communicates a message written in blood that this symbol of the city's population that we would rather happily accept a system that actively kills the people that you represent to appease a group of people who would never willingly leave their own property if they had an option. I feel as a resident of the city, as a worker in the city, as a cyclist in the city, and a person who does not want to die here, the appropriate course of action is to start with a public show of support and proceed with expeditious implementation of the Bike Bellevue Project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our final speaker that we have time for this evening is Joe Kunsler. Mr. Kunsler, I believe you're joining us online. Can you hear me? Mr. Kunsler, can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, your time begins now.
Okay, I also want to comment on a few other things that I didn't sign up for, but I'm going to, so I'm going to be rapid-fire here. I'm going to ask that the council develop a permanent no trespass policy for people who disrupt more than one meeting at a time. I think you all know who I'm talking about. I also want you to know that I'm, that I think I've successfully lobbied the City of Redmond to develop city council comment policies to stop, hopefully by March or April, this troubled individual's attacks on you. But I want to, as somebody who's very excited about the badass UT line coming out in the end of April, and has already took out a hotel reservation for the trip, I want to spend the last two minutes asking you to really, you know, now with the death of TOD legislation again, to really look at your walk sheds around your white rail stations and try to put more apartments and more restaurants near them. I appreciate that one of the stations does have a Burger King and a pub next to it, but the others are quite a bit of distance away from restaurants and such. And I was looking to take somebody out on a ride on the badass UT line and go out to grab a bite to eat, but it looks like it would be better just to ride the badass UT line for a few stations and then switch trains and go back to the hotel where there's a bar, where I'm staying at, where there's a bar, because quite frankly, there just aren't that great dining options close to white rail. And that's because Kemper Freeman and Maria Frost have way too much say and power over you. You know, the world is moving past the personal vehicle. See Europe, see Asia. And it's time for Bellevue, a city of destiny, to come to grips with the fact that you need a strong public transit system, and you need to have strong TOD around these stations. You need to have people, you know, people walk, okay? That needs to be the priority everywhere. And I really hope that that's your future goal. I have 38 seconds, now 36 seconds left. And I just want to say, in closing, I'm very excited for the opening of the badass UT line on April 27th at 10:00 a.m. Very, very excited. And I look forward to a great day celebrating one of the greatest transit advocates of all time in Claudia badass UT, and hopefully get to meet some of you great councilors. And hopefully we'll also be able to celebrate by then Redmond no longer being a firebase for Alex's malicious attacks on you. You are a great city, and you deserve so much better. I want to wish you well, and I'm very excited for badass UT line day of April 27th. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our final speaker, and we have reached the half an hour mark. So Mayor, I'll turn that back to you now.
Okay, thank you. So we have a report from our city manager, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I wanted to provide a very quick update on Bike Bellevue, the project. You've heard a lot from that tonight. And just for context, the Bike Bellevue program put out a set of project, bike lane projects, for people to provide input on. And the current project at the Planning Commission was geared towards prioritizing that set of segments. And as you know, there have been a significant amount of public comment and input and feedback received during the outreach and engagement part of the project and also the Planning Commission process. And this comment has been wide-ranging and very diverse. And that included support for moving the project forward to implement the Bike Bellevue lanes and also concerns about safety and opposition to removing the vehicle capacity. So the temporary pause was put in place by Transportation Director Singleakis in order to do essentially three things: take some time to assess that input, because it was diverse, and consider the next steps: two, to adjust the staffing to match the needs of the project; and three, to bring back a full update to the council and also bring the guiding principles back to the council to ask for your confirmation or adjustment before the Transportation Commission continues with their process. The intent was always to continue with the process once we got some further guidance from the council. And that council session is planned for the end of March. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting me provide that brief update.
Thank you so much. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing, and I have the city manager introduce the public hearing, and then staff will give us more information.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This public hearing is on proposed amendments to the Land Use Code and would allow a longer design review approval period and the opportunity for extensions to design review approvals. Staff's going to provide a brief background on their work to date, and they'll review the options for council's considerations before opening up the hearing. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approval of the recommended Option A, but you are being given two options to choose from. And from Development Services, we are joined by Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Director, and Matthew Menard, Senior Planner. And with that, I will hand it over to Nick.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and members of the City Council. As mentioned, we are here tonight asking you to hold a public hearing on a proposal to allow for extensions to design review approvals in the city of Bellevue. So with that, the direction slide is to hold the public hearing. As mentioned, we have two options for you this evening. And shall I pause a moment while we, are we waiting?
I'm going to ask you to just hold for one second.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So as mentioned earlier, we have two options for your consideration this evening. So this is our direction slide, and we've also provided the options at the end of the presentations. You've got those in front of you as you are, as we are asking for your direction. So for our agenda tonight, we are going to touch on just the background and objectives of this code amendment. We'll also discuss what the current code requirements are. We have some comparison to other cities. And then we'll talk about our stakeholder feedback, which really led to the options that are being presented to you tonight. And then we'll just touch on the process and decision criteria for this code amendment. So in terms of background, the City Council did initiate this code amendment in March of 2023. You held your first study session on this topic on November 6th. At that time, there was general support from stakeholders, as well as the council, on moving forward a land use code amendment to allow for these design review approval extensions. However, there were some questions at that November 6th study session and some feedback that you all provided that really helped inform the options that are before you today. So Matthew will kind of walk through what we had heard and then also what we're proposing then in response of that November 6th study session. But before that, I'll talk about just the objectives with this code amendment. So it is to allow for extensions to design review approvals. That would allow for projects to be able to adapt to unforeseen circumstances. It also would minimize the financial impact of expiring design review approvals in the city. And that's a financial impact that's felt by developers, but it's also felt by the city in unrealized kind of tax revenue off of projects and also in staff time that it takes to review projects and move those through our process. We'd have to basically repeat that process with the start of a new application. And then it would also address concerns associated with projects not being required to comply with updated codes. So at the November 6th study session, we did hear some interest in having projects not getting too far away from what the council policy is in terms of setting our land use code. And so we've crafted a proposal that aims to help projects kind of stay in line with current code, but also provide that flexibility that they're looking for to keep the project alive. So with our current code, design reviews are approved and expire pursuant to 2040-500 of the land use code. Right now, that expiration is after two years. So we do not have an opportunity to extend design review approvals. However, developed, projects can remain alive as long as they are pulling building permits and continuing progress on their projects. But otherwise, if there is no building permits, then the permit will, the design review will stop or die after two years. So now I'll turn this over to Matthew to kind of walk us through the comparison and then the proposal.
Thanks, Nick. So at the study session, council did ask us what neighboring jurisdictions were doing. So we wanted to give you this comparison of how we size up to the neighboring communities. So we are the shortest approval period of our comparable neighbors. Kirkland and Seattle both give five years for their approvals. Seattle is in a three-year initial approval with a two-year extension opportunity, where Kirkland gives a five-year approval. Redmond does have a two-year approval, but it allows for unlimited extensions if a hardship is present. If you remember back to the study session, we did originally propose a hardship criteria with the extensions. And council did express some concerns to us about those being too subjective and not clear enough for development. So we went back to the drawing board, and we did remove those hardship criteria from the proposal. With this proposal, we are recommending a three-year initial period similar to Seattle with two two-year extension periods. And I will explain now how we got to that recommendation. So we did speak with Bellevue Development Committee, who again reinforced the need for certainty in all of our decisions. So taking that subjective hardship criteria out of the proposal was very important to the Bellevue Development Committee. They did express support for that longer three-year initial period to give them a little bit more flexibility with the hope that we don't have to go through the extension process, that they can get it completed and on to the next step in the original three years, but understanding that the economic environment is changing quite rapidly at this point, and we may need those extensions. And we did speak with them specifically about the Seattle model of three years for the initial period and then a two-year extension. And they did express general support of that proposal. We then received additional feedback separate from the Bellevue Development Committee that requested multiple two-year extensions and did suggest some clarity language for the Luca, which have been worked in where appropriate. So with this input, we are proposing tonight for a recommended option of a three-year initial period with two two-year extension periods. With those extensions, at the beginning of each of those extensions, you would have to bring your project up to current code. So that's going to be land use code, building codes, transportation codes, other codes like that for a total duration of seven years. So we are trying to address development's need for flexibility in their projects while at the same time making sure that we are meeting council's need of not allowing projects to vest for long periods of time without having to meet current codes, especially as we update our comprehensive plan and start working through affordable housing programs. That's Option A, that is strongly recommended by staff, and I will discuss why we are recommending that shortly. We are also providing Option B, which would be the same three-year initial period and then unlimited two-year extensions. Again, each extension having to meet code. We have provided you ordinances for both of these options, so both of these options are available to be adopted tonight if you so choose. So Option A, the real reason we are recommending this is transparency. Currently, under the land use code, you can modify design review approval without going through a public notification process if it meets certain thresholds. So if it's under 20% of the square footage of the project, and it's in the original intent of the project, so quite broad thresholds, you can modify your project. So when you apply for a design review approval, you do need to give public notice, and that when it is approved, it is also noticed. So the public does have an expectation of what that project will look like. There are concerns from staff that if we move too far away from the original approval, that gives large opportunity for these to be modified through the modification process without that public notification process. So in the end, you could potentially end up with a structure that is significantly different in both form and use to what was originally noticed to the public. So making sure we are very transparent with what we are doing and what is being built in the city. We think this gives a good window for development to complete, whereas if they aren't able to complete in that seven-year period, going back to the beginning and doing that public notification process over again, if so desired, maximizes that transparency for the public. This was generally the model supported by the Bellevue Development Committee, and we've had some more public input as well that is supporting this option. With Option B, again, there's that transparency concern. We did not receive any specific input from the BDC on this proposal. It was not vetted with them. So this proposal wasn't as vetted with the public and with the development community as Option A would have been. And we do have concerns on the administrative side of things of tracking this unlimited approvals and extensions as you move further and further away from the original approval. Not only do you have to track each one of those extensions as it moves further down the line, but you move further and further away from the original code. So there are concerns that if you move, So there are concerns that if you move, you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the line, the code will have changed substantially and you're now trying to track that over time. So it's just a little bit more difficult internally for staff to manage an unlimited extension program. So the process for this, as Nick mentioned, the Luca was initiated in March of 2023. We held the study session on November 6th of 2023, again, for that input and discussion with council specifically around neighboring communities and making sure we did have that certainty in the proposal, which we have tried to work in through changing the proposal to make sure that was included. There were two touchpoints with the BDC on this project, and then we are holding the public hearing this evening. You are certainly available to make an action this evening, or if you so desire, we can come back with a different option at a later date. With all amendments to the land use code, there is a set of criteria contained in the land use code 2030 J135 that establishes the criteria for your decision-making. So you do need to meet all of these criteria for us to approve this land use code amendment. Those criteria are that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We do believe that it is consistent specifically with policy EDO 5, which is develop and maintain regulations that allow for continued economic growth while respecting the environment and quality of life of city neighborhoods. The amendment enhances the public health, safety, and welfare. We do things by allowing additional flexibility and allowing these projects to develop more quickly. We can prevent vacant lots, which can sometimes provide or cause a safety hazard. So what does increase the public health, safety, and welfare to have these properties develop? And we do not believe that the amendment is contrary to the best interests of citizens and property owners of the city of Bellevue. It is in the interest of citizens and especially properties for those properties to be able to develop, especially without the additional cost of going through the development review process over and over again. So we do think that this Luca, both option A and option B, meet the decision criteria included in the land use code. And finally, just to show the options again, these are the two options we have provided for you this evening. We are strongly recommending option A for the reasons given. And with that, Mayor, I will pass it back to you, and we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, great. Well, I think we'll go ahead and start with the public hearing and then come back to comments and questions. So we may ask you to come back for that. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Thank you. Yes, we do have three pre-registered speakers. And before I call their names, I will draw the council's attention to the fact that you did receive one written comment for this public hearing, which was emailed to you today and then also included in your desk packet for this evening. So with that, I will call our first speaker, who is Milette Desmesay, who I believe was joining us virtually earlier, but don't see connected anymore. Ms. Desmesay, if you're connected online, could you please raise your hand? Okay. The next speaker is Sonia Forster, who I also do not see connected any longer. Ms. Forster, if you're in the audience with us, could you please raise your hand? Okay. And the third and final is Abigail DeWes.
Good evening again. As you know, I'm a land use attorney at the Hillis Clark Firm in Seattle. I represent many developers in Bellevue. I'm also the governmental affairs chair for NAAP Washington State and a board member for the Bellevue Chamber and an active participant in their Plush Committee. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of both NAAP Washington State and the Bellevue Plush Committee. We wrote a letter to you, as you know, you received it in your packet this afternoon, in support of option A for administrative design review extensions presented by staff tonight. While we also recognize the benefits of option B, having an unlimited flexibility, you know, more flexibility is always supported by developers, but we understand and agree with both the administrative and potential public notice issues with option B, and so are supporting option A tonight. And we did ask you to advance this. It's vital that there's a clear mechanism in the land use code to allow extensions of ADRs, and the code currently lacks that. ADRs typically represent millions of dollars of investment by applicants and soft costs that go beyond just permit fees, including architect, engineer, and land use attorney costs. Codifying the ability to extend these types of permits as adoption of option A advances will send a strong signal to the development community that you recognize and support their investment in Bellevue. I also wanted to highlight an additional point in our letter. So in recognition of the current real estate recession, the city of Seattle in December passed a permit extension ordinance that applies to their master use permits, which are really similar to ADRs here in Bellevue. That extension grants those permits six years of permit life under whatever code they vested to at the time and applies to all permits issued between 2019 and 2026. And so that's really a stopgap measure that the city of Seattle passed to allow more permits to continue their existing life, given the current real estate recession. And we'd asked after that previously, they said it wasn't within the scope of this ordinance effort, but is something that you could authorize moving forward. So we're asking you to do something similar so that Bellevue continues to send the important strong signals to the market that you understand the current conditions and really want that investment to continue in the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the last person on our pre-registered list. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening who would like to make a comment. If you're in chambers, please raise your hand, and if you're online, please use the raise hand function. Okay. If you could state your name when you come up, please, thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Myers, and I looked into this, actually, I came tonight because I was hoping to speak about keeping Bellevue bedrooms quiet. But I think after also having looked at this item for the agenda, it's definitely not my area of expertise, but it looks like it's a very solid thing for Bellevue to pursue to ensure that we have a good environment for development in the future. And actually, I had been about to ask why this is only forward-looking for new applicants and not something that was going to apply to all the existing projects that, you know, of course, we do support and would like to see move forward. I am curious what the impact on staff time is if you're looking at a review versus, and a renewal extension versus looking at something from scratch, but I don't really have any concerns with this. It looks like a good idea for Bellevue to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't see any additional hands online or in chambers, so I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions about this? The only thing I was going to ask staff is just to clarify how this, these two options affect existing projects.
Sure. So as currently drafted in the ordinances within your packet, both options would apply to future projects. So the, after the effective date of this ordinance is when those decisions would then have vesting for the three-year period, and then whichever option you all choose, whether that's two, two-year extensions or the unlimited, but this would not apply to projects that have already received approvals. But anything that's in process now, you vest at approval of a design review, so this would actually impact a lot of the projects that are under review right now.
Right.
Just not those that have already been issued decisions.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Let's start with Councilmember Zahn.
Mayor, if I might.
What?
It's me.
Oh.
We need to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's start with Councilmembers on, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. You know, I was just going back to our packet from February 5th, where we were actually extending permit review. So I was actually similarly trying to understand how this particular one fits in with the one that we just looked at from two weeks ago, which was permit extension ordinance. Are they intertwined and interrelated, correct? Or not at all? Can you help, can you help explain?
Sure, I can attempt to. Our building official's not here, though, and he was really the speaker there for that item, but that did relate to our building permits and clearing and grading permits, and it allowed for those permits to be extended. So that is one of those options where if you keep that permit alive, which you all voted that night to extend those, that they remain vested then under the land use code to whatever approval they had. If those permits expire, then depending on where they're at with their ADR or design review approval, it might also be that that project expires. So this ordinance tonight would not allow those to kind of continue on because they have all, in theory, if they're having building permits pulled, they've already got their design review approvals. So this wouldn't apply to those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Newenhouse, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Well, I first want to thank you for the great presentation and also thank you for the great outreach that your team, Director Horner, and interacting with the Plush Committee and all the rest was, was, was great work. I'm in favor of moving option A forward tonight. I did also have a question regarding this permit, permit extension ordinance at the city of Seattle. Could you, I'm sure you're familiar with that, but could you just give brief explanation of how Seattle kind of structured that and if that would make sense for the city of Bellevue as well?
Sure. Absolutely. So as the commenter noted, there is an ordinance that was approved by the city council in Seattle that was an interim ordinance, and it impacted, as the commenter mentioned, projects within a certain time period. So there are master use permits that were approved between the period of, I believe it was March 2020 until December 2026. Anything that's approved within that window would get an automatic five, six, six years, maybe, six-year vesting. And so that would be an ordinance that sunsets, though, after December of 2026. At least in their written materials, it was kind of pitched as a post-pandemic economic recovery type item, and that would be separate from what you're viewing tonight, obviously. If you wanted to direct that kind of work, that would be a, likely an interim ordinance is what you'd probably want to structure that as, similar to Seattle.
Correct. That's my understanding as well. So thank you for that. If my colleagues agree, I would like for us to explore an ordinance like that during these downturn in the, in the real estate market and the heavy burden on developers in our city right now. I think it'd make a lot of sense in a number of different, number of different areas. So if my colleagues would support that, I would, I think it would be worth our time to explore a similar type of ordinance. But I'm going to go on option A and thank you again for your work.
Councilmember Newenhouse, for clarification, are you asking us to, instead of vote for an option tonight, to explore what Seattle's doing?
Not saying we move forward with option A tonight, but that we also explore separately a separate ordinance.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm curious about this permitting extension, that if they haven't got the permit completed, they can actually be, you know, having the opportunity to extend it. Is that something that people understand, developer use? Is there the mechanism which actually can kind of complement what we're talking about?
Let me make sure I'm understanding correctly, Councilmember Lee. Are you referring to design review approvals? And is the question, do, are people aware that those decisions vest at the time of issuance rather than at the time that they're submitted and complete? Is that, is that the question?
Well, you mentioned that if they couldn't get the design review completed or the whole permitting process done, they, if, they can actually keep extending it? Is it something like that you talk about, or maybe I heard incorrectly?
A couple of things to clarify with that. So if there are design review applications that are in process right now, which there are many, and it's not uncommon that those could take six to 12 months, sometimes longer. So any of those that are in review right now, if council takes action on option A or B, those projects, if they're issued after the effective date of this ordinance, would then vest under these rules that you're deciding or setting tonight, because the vesting begins at the time that that project decision is made. And under our current structure, those would expire after two years. However, they can keep that design review approval alive if they pull a building permit, if they're actively working on that building permit, then the design review approval will remain alive while they're proceeding with construction permits. And that is the same under this proposal as well. So we'd be caring for that kind of rule.
So that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
So would that process be able to allow this extension to be even extended further beyond the two years?
So this rule that you are all reviewing tonight would allow for, if, we'll say the building permit expires, if the design review is still vested or active, then they can pull another building permit, or they can ask for an extension to the design review. The caveat with this, the way this ordinance is structured, both option A and B, is that at the time that extension is sought, we would have to do a compliance check with current regulations to make sure they don't need to make any changes to their building permit. Or if they have to modify their land use permit, the design review, then they'd have to go through the modification process to make sure that they are meeting current requirements. So they can then be granted that additional two-year extension. And so then, within that next two years, they can pull a building permit, they can continue kind of working on their project, or they can wait until the economic conditions are ripe for them to then pull a permit. If that doesn't happen in the next two years, the option A would allow them to ask for one more extension for two years with the maximum time of seven years.
Okay. So there's a way for them to extend the time where they can actually get the project done by applying for permit and all the processes necessary, but it requires other considerations, other process, and all that stuff?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Certainly think that Councilmember Newenhouse's suggestion that we do have something similar to the Seattle ordinance, that makes a lot of sense. So would, would be interested in that going forward. I think option A does make a lot of sense, you know, certainly helps keep the projects in the pipeline and projects teed up so that when market conditions change, you know, those projects are ready to go. And, and council in November, talking about supporting regional competitiveness, this certainly seems to get at that, so certainly appreciate that. And then, too, to have the criteria for how you get an extension to be really well described, everybody knows it, so we have the chance to just know the same rules. I think that kind of clarity just makes the whole process a lot easier. So certainly looking forward to supporting option A. Thank you.
Council, Deputy Mayor Malkusian.
Yes. Thank you so much for your presentation, as always, great job. I just have, I understand the goal for offering flexibility 100%. My only question is, where that seven years came from as a threshold of the transparency to the public? Why not five? Why not nine? Like, how did, beside talking to two groups, I have heard, how did you land up in three years, two years, two years, instead of another option, three years, two years, that become five years, match Seattle and other places? Or three years, two years, two years, two years, that became nine years? And again, that would be, again, great flexibility for development, development folks. Just wanted to know, how did you land on the seven years?
Sure. And I can start, and then Matthew can certainly kind of fill in as well, but I'll start, I guess, first, Deputy Mayor, with, it's not an exact science, so there is a lot of kind of variation out there in terms of what type of flexibility cities provide and what that looks like. And so with the initial approval period of three years, we were finding at least that was consistent with the city of Seattle. The three years is also a vesting period, so that's, you could kind of view that as a protection against any changes to the land use code that projects would enjoy. And so we were at two years. We thought, well, let's, we can look at doing that up to three years, given the feedback we heard about having some competitiveness within the region and seeing kind of what Seattle, which we have a lot of the same clientele, what they are also kind of dealing with on that side of the lake. And then with the two, two-year extensions, again, that kind of points to some of the competitiveness that we were aiming towards, knowing that most of the jurisdictions were landing at five. Seattle created that interim ordinance that brought people to six. Then we had Redmond as kind of the outlier, where they do allow multiple one-year extensions, but they had the criteria around hardship. So we were just trying to kind of survey the land and understand, based on the feedback you all provided, where a good spot to land would be. And that's kind of how we ended up with this equation here of the three plus two plus two. But you could certainly kind of slice this any, any other way, that's entirely up to you. But Matthew, I don't know if you had anything else from outreach you wanted to bring in?
I think that covers it nicely. It's really about finding that balance between what we've heard from various stakeholders and then our responsibility to the public to be transparent and our responsibility to the public to be streamlined administratively. So trying to weigh all of those different items and find that happy medium that maybe doesn't give everyone what they want, but gives everyone, you know, in the ballpark of what we're trying to do.
Well, thank you. That was a great answer, the balance between flexibility and accountability. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes, did you have a comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I'm in favor of, I, in terms of the number of years and all that, as you said, it's, it's not a, it's not really a scientific thing, it's a way of looking at how the balance is on that. And I think one of the important things we have to keep in mind is that, yes, this recession and everything has, has caused some delays on things, but what we've learned from years past is that the years of 10 years to somebody working on something to do is not rational in a sense, and things are going quicker. Once we get to certain phase, and if things come back as they seem to be coming at some point, this may speed this up. So I think you hit a really good sweet spot in terms of the number of years, three years for the approval, and then two, two years after that, seven years is, is a lot of time. And who knows what could happen in seven years? We could do some other things, too. So I think it's a, a very rational proposal and would be something that people could work with very well. The other question I have is, what exactly is the difference with people who are not included in this because they already have a project going? How, is, is this, does it really come out that no, neither one of these are better than the other? It's just the conditions and how it's worked, how, how you're, what, where the stages is? It's more in terms of processing and all as opposed to doing something, the other groups are not doing something or have an advantage that is not included in this, or vice versa? Is that correct?
Well, Councilmember Stokes, if I understand the question correctly, the, this ordinance will apply to anything that's approved after the effective date. And so that is an advantage to projects that haven't gotten approvals yet, but there are a number of projects that are in process and, and a lot of future projects in Wilberton, Bellred, downtown, that we expect to be coming and being able to take advantage of this. This would not affect projects that are, that have already received design review approvals. This would not affect projects that are, that have already received design review approvals. And so namely, the ones over the past two years that are likely going to be expiring soon. Because they vested to the old rules, so then they would actually expire after two years. So they, they could, would have to reapply, just as they would have had to for the previous, however long this vesting section has been in place, which has been certainly more than 10 years. But anything new would take advantage of kind of this new rule that's helpful to those projects.
Yeah, so it's really equitable to have all the developers working on this, just depending on where they are in the process and it's.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I think it's great. I think we move on that. The, the ideas of looking at this differently is Councilmember Nguyen House said is, is a good idea as well, but that comes later. So we get this in place and then we can look at these other issues. So I'm, I'm ready to, to vote for this. I think it's a really good, good work and a, and a good solution to working on this. That's, that's rational and can be done.
So I'm hearing support, broad support for option A. I just want to thank Rebecca Horner for the develop, the creating the, I think you created it, the Bellevue Development Committee. I've heard many positive things about it from our developers and our businesses in Bellevue. And it seems like you all did a very good process in getting feedback, which makes it easier for us to make decisions. So I just want to thank you for that. And with that, is there a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance, ordinance 6778, option A, amending chapter 2030F of the city of Bellevue Land Use Code to include a new land use code 2030F 190 to allow a longer design review approval period and opportunity for extensions to design review approvals and amending land use code 2040 500 to clarify vesting of design review approvals.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have three study session items. And City Manager, could you please introduce them?
Thank you, Mayor. This first study session item is a review of the proposed local speed limit reduction project. This is a recommendation that is in alignment with the city's Vision Zero goal. Staff will also share what they have learned in speed reduction pilots across the city that have been conducted to test out this response to speeding concerns shared by members of the community. Staff is requesting council consider directing their outreach on a proposed project and would return then later this year with a proposed draft ordinance. Joining from Transportation Department, we have Chris Long, Assistant Director of Mobility Operations, Vanessa Humphreys, Neighborhood Traffic Safety Services Manager, and John Murphy, the Senior Planner on this project. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa, who's going to kick us off.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to discuss our project to reduce the speed limit on local streets in Bellevue. And tonight, we will be seeking your direction to begin outreach with the community with the plan to return later this year with a draft ordinance to lower the speed limit for your consideration, as well as to share with you what we've heard from the community. We will be going over the background and need for this project, sharing more about what the project entails, our plans to engage the community, and finally ending on seeking your direction to begin that engagement. So what are we proposing? We are proposing to lower the speed limit on most local streets in Bellevue from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. Why are we proposing it? In the Neighborhood Traffic Group, we work closely with the community, and speeding is the number one concern we hear from Bellevue residents on local streets. In addition, in 2015, then council passed a resolution to pursue the goal of Vision Zero to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries on Bellevue roads by 2030. And again, in 2020, then council passed a resolution to adopt the safe systems approach to achieving Vision Zero. And safe speeds are a cornerstone of the safe systems approach. Data shows that lower speeds saves lives. And as shown in the graphic on the right, for every incremental reduction in speed, there's a significant reduction in risk to pedestrians. This, this change would communicate a culture shift of safe speeds in Bellevue and convey the message that safety starts on your street. An overview of speed management in Bellevue. Streets are either classified as arterial or local, which is defined in the comprehensive plan. And there's a different speed management technique for each classification. For arterials, the recently completed speed management plan focuses on streets with a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour or greater. This project does not focus on arterial speeds. Transportation staff will be returning later this year to discuss arterial speed, speed limits. For local streets, or streets with a posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, speeding is addressed by our Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, and our toolkit is defined in the Residential Traffic Guidebook. Our longstanding traffic calming program started back in 1985. As noted, speeding is the number one concern. Our program is resident-driven, and as I mentioned, we work closely with the community to shape projects and to identify which traffic calming features will best address the traffic safety concerns in a given neighborhood. And because traffic safety does require a multifaceted approach, we work to implement a blend of physical elements such as traffic circles, speed cushions, and speed humps, along with educational and encouragement programs. And we're always looking to add to and revise our toolkit. And lowering the speed limit is another tool in the traffic safety toolkit. And now I will turn it over to John to share more details about the project.
Thank you, Vanessa. Yeah, so in the spirit of always looking to add to our traffic calming toolkit and maximizing the benefits of how to reduce speeds on local streets, this idea of lower speed limits, it's a Federal Highway Association proven countermeasure has gained favor both locally and nationally, and we'll talk about that a little more. But the, our current speed limit on local streets in Bellevue currently is 25 miles per hour. And our local streets comprise most of the streets in Bellevue. About 64% of our transportation network is comprised of these streets that people live on, that people walk on, that people take to parks and schools and to their community centers. We do have a few local streets that we think will remain at 25 miles per hour. We think that speed limit is a little more appropriate. And ultimately, this work is building on three years of implementing 20 mile per hour projects in a few pockets in the city, which we'll, we'll dive into. So what are we talking about if this project moves forward? It is primarily a sign project, but we have a lot of signs in Bellevue. We have over 350 existing 25 mile per hour signs on local streets. If we're lowering the speed limit, we need to change all those signs. How we do business in Bellevue, when we touch a piece of infrastructure and, and add to it, change it, we need to bring, bring that infrastructure up to our current design standards. And about half of our existing speed limit signs on local streets in Bellevue need to be brought up to our current design standards. This is primarily changing to our, our new post that we use across the city. We also have these 25 mile per hour pavement marking legends that you see in the photo here on the screen to reinforce the speed limit. This would, project would replace those existing pavement marking legends and swap them out with 20 to reflect the new speed limit. And we'd also be looking at the strategic installation of additional signs where needed to really reinforce the speed limit. Critical to any project that we do in the Transportation Department is measuring its effectiveness. So we have a commitment to evaluate kind of whether there is change associated with this project. And we think there will be. We think we'll see reductions in speed. But we'll make sure that we conduct before and after speed studies to actually quantify that effectiveness. We do have funding identified within the transportation levy to support this work. And right now, the estimate to perform this work is about $500,000. How this actually gets done, starting at the top, the state code does allow local agencies to set the speed limit to 20 miles per hour without conducting an engineering study on every single street. And we've done that in the past with our, our three 20 mile per hour projects. And the way we do that in Bellevue is via ordinance to change chapter 11 dot 32 of our city code, which indicates what the speed limit is on all of our streets. And then a little more granular, we do have a standard operating procedure that provides some additional guidance and documentation requirements when we do adjust the speed limit in the city. We are embarking on this project not randomly and certainly not without haste. We have been monitoring this idea of lower speed limits, both locally and nationally, for a number of years. Our neighbors, Seattle, have implemented a 20 mile per hour local speed limit reduction in 2016 or so. Issaquah and Renton have also implemented a few streets at 20, as the cases in Issaquah, and set the framework for a 20 mile per hour reduction in Renton. Portland is cited as kind of the biggest case study in can signs, and signs alone bring down speeds. And the city of Portland underwent a pretty comprehensive before and after study of effectiveness when they went to 20 citywide. And what they saw was a significant reduction in high-end speeding, 30 miles per hour plus, which is really the type of speeding that concerns us most. We want to, you know, bring those high speeds down to really protect our vulnerable users. So we'll see some of those results reflected in the Bellevue example as well. So I did mention that we've been thinking about this. We've been iterating on a 20 mile per hour project since 2020, when we went to Suri Downs in our first neighborhood to lower the speed limit from 25 to 20. And then in 2021, in East Bellevue along the Greenway. And then in 2022, our largest deployment in the East Gate neighborhood around Taiyi Middle School. And what we saw in each and every one of those three installations, because we did measure speeds before and after, is that we did see a reduction in high-end speeding, mimicking that result that Portland found as well. Speed reductions alone is not the only metric that we use. We also want to understand how the community feels about a lower speed limit. In East Bellevue, there were a few other treatments that were deployed with that Greenway, some traffic circles, some wayfinding. And when we asked the community kind of what treatment they favored most, the lower speed limit was the, the number one response. Similarly, in East Gate, when we asked the community whether they thought safety was enhanced, about 60% of respondents thought that safety was enhanced as a result of the lower speed limit. And a kind of measuring those speeds out there, we saw a pretty significant decline in that high-end speeding again. We've done some initial outreach, kind of very specific about those 25 mile per hour pavement markings to determine whether we wanted to keep those moving forward. We put a citywide survey out there, and overwhelmingly, the community likes those. So if this project advances, we have a commitment to replace those 25 mile per hour pavement marking legends with 20. We didn't have much data on that, so we're glad we asked. Because we have done this in a few neighborhoods already, there are kind of two kind of top-of-mind recurring questions that we have gotten about a lower speed limit in Bellevue. One is, will the speed limit be enforced? And two, will you still be building and investing in traffic calming, like speed humps and traffic circles? And the answer now and the answer in the future to both of those questions is yes. We hear, Vanessa and I hear from hundreds of residents directly on a yearly basis, and we connect them up with our enforcement resources. If they do have a request for traffic enforcement on their street, to make sure they know how to connect up with our police staff to get enforcement out there. And we are coordinating with our police department on this change. And then our traffic calming program will continue with the lower speed limit. We will still be out there building physical countermeasures because we know we're not going to reduce speeds everywhere with just signs, and we want to reinforce that with actually changing the street design. So the draft project timeline before you, tonight, we're here to seek your direction to begin outreach, to really launch to the community, let them know that this is a project that we're considering. Try to answer their questions that they have about a lower speed limit. We would come back later this year with what we heard from the community and with that draft ordinance for your consideration to actually lower the speed limit. That signals to staff to actually initiate design, to change out all those signs and those 25 mile per hour pavement marking legends. And then around summer of 2025, that's when the community would actually see the signs change on their streets. So about a year and a half from now is, is when that would occur. So this is a big change, and we know the community will be interested in it. And we want to make sure that we bring the community along on this project. We have a pretty robust draft outreach plan developed that is ready to launch if we receive that direction tonight. And we really want to saturate the community with project information and gather the questions that they may have to make sure that their questions are answered. Won't go through this one by one, but the, the key idea here is that we really want to tap a lot of our existing networks. We have a robust network of community association, associations that we will want to connect with, offer up briefings. We want to go to where the people are, like farmers markets, and tap our networks like our Bellevue Essentials alumni, and just try to get the word out in as many channels as, as we can. One of the kind of things that we've learned from other agencies is that when you consider a, a speed limit reduction at scale like this, it generates a lot of awareness. You know, there's opportunities to engage youth in child art contests that we turn into yard signs. Media picks it up. But it's, it's worth noting that that itself is a pretty powerful message in creating that culture shift that Vanessa alluded to, is that safety starts on your street. You do this kind of incrementally, it's unclear where the speed limit is, on what street. You do this at scale. That message kind of cuts through to the entire community and creates a lot more awareness and predictability of what the expectation is for traveling on, on city streets in Bellevue. And then with that, turn it over to questions. But just as a reminder, we are seeking direction tonight to begin outreach and return later this year with a draft ordinance for your consideration to actually change that speed code. And then we would embark on design and come back in, in summer 2025 to actually change out those speed limit signs.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen House, I believe you are a liaison for transportation. Let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Vanessa, Chris, and John, thank you so much for your presentation. Have some questions to start off with. So first of all, on the survey that you referenced, how many, how many residents filled out that, that survey?
I don't have the exact numbers. Before me, the East Bellevue Greenway, we had about 200 folks respond to that one.
About 200.
And then the East Gate, it was a smaller number. It was only about 25 people that responded. But we did invite the entire community to respond and was in touch with the president of the East Gate Community Association, tried to get the word out.
Okay, great. No, and I really appreciate your level of outreach and especially reaching out to our neighborhood associations, Bellevue Essentials, et cetera, really getting the word out about the pilot projects and what you're trying to accomplish here. So I really appreciate that. Do you feel that at this point, I know additional outreach is forthcoming if we move forward, but I'm, I'm just curious, do you feel you've heard from enough residents at this point where you feel confident that residents are, are behind this? where you feel confident that residents are behind this? And, you know, some of this, some of the data, you know, it's a fairly limited pilot. So I'm just, you know, trying to drill down on that a little bit. But do you feel like we've heard from enough residents to move this forward at this point, even though I know you want to have more of an extended outreach as well?
That's exactly what we want to do, to see if there are things that we don't know about right now. We want to make sure that we hear them. I can say, because we've been iterating on those three projects in Suri Downs, East Bellevue, and East Gate, the community has noticed those. And like I mentioned, we hear directly from the residents, and they will say, hey, I live in Ennatai, I saw that East Gate got a 20 mile per hour reduction, can we get that? So we've actually heard from residents that have seen, experienced these pilot projects in Bellevue and are asking and requesting for a lower speed limit in their neighborhood. So we think that there is kind of broader desire for this. The even limited sample size seems to indicate support, but that outreach will certainly reveal whether there are other voices that we should consider.
Okay. And then, you also mentioned that some streets will remain at 25. So what's the criteria for a street to remain at 25 versus go down to 20?
Yeah, it's only about 10 that we are identifying right now, and it's really places that are kind of connecting to more major roads and don't have a lot of other services or destinations on them, something that we refer to as access density, driveways and streets. Think about a forested road where you don't have a lot of vehicles that are turning off and creating conflict, where just feels, if you were driving it, you would probably think, this should be 25 rather than 20. So we've identified about 10 of those that we think will remain at 25.
About 10. And what parts, are they distributed around the city, or are they in one particular location?
They are pretty widely distributed, as I'm going through the map in my head. They are concentrated, you know, in the Wilburton neighborhood, for example. I think they're pretty much, there's probably an example in every neighborhood.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. And then, just lastly, it's great that you're working with Bellevue PD on the implementation of this as well as enforcement, because that's going to be a big piece of this as well. Just, you know, my personal, it's great that we're changing the signs, and some people will take notice, but there might be plenty of folks that might not take notice at the beginning. So how do you foresee, or maybe it's too early to talk about it, but, because you've still got more work to do, but how would you foresee working with BPD on that in terms of actual enforcement if we go from 25 to 20?
Yeah, we'll want to make sure that they are very much aware of which streets are 20 and which are 25. We think that'll be pretty legible, given that we're only looking at about 10 of those to stay at 25. Just want to quickly clarify something that I neglected to say earlier. In the East Gate example, where we saw that kind of precipitous drop in high end speeding, that was without any additional increased enforcement. That was really a reflection of just changing the signs and trying to use our communication channels to get the word out about that lower speed limit. So we think, you know, we have a big lift on our side to further that type of messaging citywide through all of our outreach techniques. But with regards to working with police specifically, as we get closer, should we get closer to launch, we'll want to make sure what their kind of capacity and expectations are for enforcing the speed limit. But as I mentioned, we're connecting stat, or residents with kind of the traffic service requests, which is the intake method that police use to get a street into their rotation. And we would envision kind of maintaining that relationship moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
I'm all covered, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, a couple of questions, a couple of questions here. I noticed in the first slide you had on this, you had 20 miles per hour, and then you had 30 miles per hour, and then 45, I think it was. Is there a significant difference between 25 and 30 with 20? I mean, does it, it, I think, you just need to have the, show what actually the difference is, because 25 more hour miles, you know, is, people look at that and say, well, it's not a whole lot of difference. And if you go back and all you have on is what you have with 30 and 20, that could cause some problems. But I mean, I know it's significant enough to do that, but still, that would help.
Yeah, a lot of the research in this field does look at that kind of 20, 30, 40 break, unfortunately. Reading a little more into the research, there seems to be still a great benefit even going from 25 to 20, but I don't have that actual quantified tonight.
I think, yeah, I think it'd be good if you could find that out. I mean, it just helps, because there are going to be some people who will say, that's not a big difference kind of thing, you know. The other question I have is, and how we deal with it, is, and coming up, where I live in Woodbridge, and coming up the hill, and you go to a lot of other places, there is a lot of drive-through traffic that are not people who live in Bellevue, that are working in Bellevue, and they're trying to get from downtown over to the freeway and that, and they go through the neighborhoods. And when we were doing the, back early on before the pandemic, and we're having some problems in Woodbridge, we did put up 20 mile per hour signs, everything, and really, because we were having jams, you know, people coming through there. So you do have that, and they're come up that hill really fast. And they're gonna, that's gonna be a problem, I think, at some point. But people who, in the neighborhoods, would like to have it not be as dangerous, so I think that's good. It's just going to take some education, and we're still going to have to, you know, work on that, and the police will have some work to do on it. But I agree, I think it would be great to have that reduction and have, and because there are a lot more people get on the street now, and a lot more people walking and everything else, I think it's going to be a really good thing to do. But just those kind of small things, but I think they may be important in terms of, at some point, in getting the public to be more accessible.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn.
Well, thank you, Vanessa, John, and Chris. This is really, really important piece related to Vision Zero and safe speeds. And you couldn't have said it any better about safety starts on your street. And then, I think that I'd heard Andrew St. Galacis say, speed is important for our local community and safety. And, you know, to me, this is really following transportation best practice. So whether we discreetly have the data that says, what's the difference between 25 and 20, you know, physics shows that the faster you go, if you hit an object that's not moving, it's gonna, you know, create injuries. And so, I would encourage us to do that outreach, get as many people, as you were already talking about, involved in this. You know, make our mascot, the safety bee, out there, create signs about heroes for zero. I mean, this can be this huge community effort that brings us together to say that absolutely safety in our streets matters, and that driving 20 miles an hour is really keeping your neighbor safe, your neighbor's kid safe, your senior safe, and that, at the end of the day, our hope would be that we are not reaching into the enforcement part so much as actually the community supporting each other to say that we all want to be safe. And so, I just love this whole effort that we're embarking on, and then knowing that we're still going to do countermeasures and street design to make sure that, and I'm just going to say that I might push back a little bit about those 10 streets, where just because it's more wooded and you could drive 25, I might say just because you can doesn't mean you should, because my concern would be that certain streets, we train people to drive 20, 20, but then there's others where it looks really open, and then more speeding continues to happen. And the reason I bring that up is because when I look at the map, you know, there are some arterials, and I know we're going to take that in the second piece, that look like they literally cut through neighborhoods. So when I think about that, you know, how do we keep our neighborhood streets and the speeds low so that kids in those streets can be playing as safely as other neighborhood streets that doesn't have an arterial running through it? So I just would encourage us to think about whether we create very many exceptions, or that, you know, we think about what the design of that street is, so that folks don't think that, oh, this one, it's a local street, but we want to drive 25 or 30 or something faster. So it's just something I think that's really important. And then, yeah, I just look forward to getting this moving and then working on the next piece, which is arterials. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
This is a very important program. I appreciate the staff, you guys are working on it. And also, it's not easy, it's challenging, because I think in order to be really effective, people have to be educated, they have to want to do it. As we see, there are more and more crazy people driving in the street. Of course, you know, there are for many reasons, impatient, traffic congestion, taking longer time, everybody's busy running from one place to another place, and people don't pay attention, you know, obviously, all these are reasons. And so, we need to figure out how to do all the things necessary. Ultimately, I believe still, people have to be fully aware, and want to be conscientious about, you know, not endangering other people themselves. You know, I just, a comment, I noticed on your, one of the slides, you have a police officer stopping a car. I recognize the place, I think it's going up to Somerset. I'm only glad that I'm not the guy who's driving their cars, not my car stopping. But anyway, one of the things I would suggest is, you know, because it's challenging to implement it, it's not easy. You know, we're talking about enforcement, you know, enforcement's probably sometimes the last, but it has to be done. So I was thinking for a long time, I've been to some cities in California, you know, every intersection has a stop sign. Even though people in California, they don't stop, that's why I saw California stop, right? They always move. But people always tend to slow down when they see a sign in front of them. So that might create some consideration, some thinking, ah, you know, I'm supposed to really do certain things that is good and safe, you know, and think about their own safety as well. So we have to think of all the ways to make sure it works, that's all. But I think what you're doing is a very important step to move in that direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Every council member mentioned all of the great question and points. I just wanted to appreciate you, that was a great presentation. You started with safety as the main concerns. You mentioned that just changing the sign would reduce some of the speed. I love that you connected the whole thing to outreach, education, enforcement, and also the traffic calming. The only comment I wanted to add to everything I've heard is, the cost of doing this is going to be very negligible if we do the actual cost benefit analysis, and how many accidents we save, and how many road maintenance we save, because we are going to less speed. So I think overall, it's going to benefit the city as a whole. So thank you so much.
Okay, I just have three questions and a comment, and you can have a quick answer. And if it's, want to do more, you can go over email, I think, but I'll just give you my questions and my comment. I'm wondering with the wayfinding apps, if the reduction in speed might discourage the apps from guiding people through our residential neighborhoods, that's number one. Number two, can we work with the police and ask them to give everybody a warning first? Everybody gets one warning if they thought that was a good idea. Number three, are we getting funding from the federal Safe Routes to School program? Because it seems like that would fit for this. And number four, you know, there's an emphasis on residential speed limits, and downtown is our fastest growing neighborhood, and we have a lot of, as you know, racing downtown. And so, I hope that there is a focus to reduce speeds in downtown as well.
Yeah, thanks for your questions. I can, would you like me to offer some rapid fire responses now?
Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, so wayfinding apps, lowering the speed limit on its face likely won't discourage wayfinding apps from routing through neighborhoods. It's possible that, you know, the travel patterns change as a result of the lower speed limit, and there is a negligible difference. I will say, kind of, that kind of cut through issue as it relates to wayfinding is a systemic issue that is rooted kind of outside of our local street network. And we are doing a lot of great work through our levy and our congestion reduction program to try to alleviate some of those pinch points that makes it easier to get in and out of neighborhoods, so we don't see that spillover effect occurring in the neighborhoods. warnings from police department. Similarly, Councilmember Stokes mentioned the Woodbridge project to discourage cut-through traffic. We restricted movements during peak times at a few intersections to really discourage those wayfinding apps from using those neighborhood streets. And that was a big change for the community. I worked on that, I heard from a lot of folks up there. And police do make a habit of issuing warnings when a big change like that does go into effect. Similarly, in Belcraft, where we add turn restrictions, go in. I think with something like this, we would want to make sure that we understand what their expectations are with enforcement and warnings, so we can certainly clarify that. Safe Routes to School, funding for this project, no, we don't have Safe Routes to School funding for this project. We do have Safe Routes to School funding for some other projects in the city, including sidewalk connections to schools. And we're always interested in seeking grant funding as well. Specifically for this project, it could be a timing element. We would need to make sure that kind of the timelines work, because grant timelines sometimes work different than what our goals are, too. And then, the downtown speed limit, that'll certainly be under consideration when we talk about arterial speeds, when we bring that back later this year.
And then, the non-arturials in downtown, so around, like in Old Bellevue and things like that, maybe that is, maybe Main, in Old Bellevue, you consider that an arterial, but there are some side streets around there as well. Okay, thank you, very good. So I think we have a motion here. Well, Councilmembers Zahn, would you like to make the motion? Sorry.
I would love to. This is actually one of my favorite projects. All right, here we go. I move to direct staff to commence community outreach and prepare a draft ordinance to lower local speed limit to 20 miles an hour, to be brought back for council consideration at a future meeting.
Seven.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you. I think we will take a break here. Come back at 8 o'clock. And City Manager, would you like to introduce the first one?
Thanks, Mayor. This is a presentation on the Joint 24-25 Land Use Planning Initiative, the Loopy Work Plan, and that's for Community Development and Development Services. This is an information item, no direction is being sought tonight. And we have Emile King, Planning Director from Community Development, and Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Director from Development Services. And that'll turn it over to Mr. King.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Nick and I are here tonight to share the Joint Land Use Planning Initiative work plan, so we commonly refer to that as the Loopy Work Program. And we have the honor of presenting a very robust work program over the next two years, and we do represent a lot of professional staff who support us in furthering the plan updates for the comp plan, the land use code updates, as well as city code updates. So those are the types of projects that do represent the Loopy Work Program. You also notice that our two departments work on a lot of other things beyond just the Loopy Work, but this is one body of work that we committed two years ago to bring a work program to you. a work program to you. That was back in April of 2022, so this is again, our spring visit to you, and we intend to do this every two years. So as the city manager mentioned, this is for information only, we're going to be going over the next two years of proposed work to do. This is important, in our opinion, to bring forward to the council so that there's an awareness of the city council, the community out there, on what's upcoming. Many of these have planning commission review, other board and commission review, and ultimately city council adoption. They also have a robust community engagement effort, so it's good that there's an awareness of what we are planning to do over the next two-year period. The agenda tonight, Nick and I are going to go ahead and share the presentation, so we'll be going back and forth as we go through the next number of slides. We'll start out with a planning process overview, so you can understand why it is important to have up-to-date plans and codes, and how it does relate to actual development happening in the city. We have a great two years of accomplishments that we're going to share with you, so that was from that past Loopy Work Program that we brought to you two years ago. We'll go into a little bit of detail on how we prioritize the work plan. There's going to be a lot of things on this two-year work program, and then there are things on the docket that would occur after this two-year period. We'll spend some time walking through the individual projects and talk about some of the synergies that we see and how we kind of look into putting things together to be most effective and efficient on things. And then we'll wrap up looking at the post-2025 docket for what's to come after this two-year period.
Great, thanks, Emile. So, and good evening. So for this first slide here, we wanted to just orient everyone with the different kind of roles that our policy documents have, and noting too, that both Community Development and Development Services are tasked with updates and amendments to the city's comprehensive plan as well as the land use code. And the comprehensive plan, of course, communicates that high-level vision and priorities for future development. The land use code will set the standards and requirements, essentially the rules that development must abide by, and then in turn, all development project proposals must be consistent with the land use code, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So it all works together, hence why our departments work so closely together as we move through these projects. So this graphic here on the Land Use Planning Initiative process is intended to be read from left to right. The graphic is just illustrating how we think about the different phases as we're moving through a process. So we start out at the beginning, pretty heavy on policy development, and then we are still, though, considering how the code might shape up with those policy as they're being worked through. And then you start to see as you move towards the right, the code development starts to take a bigger role as the policy really takes shape, and then we're also thinking ahead to how these items might be implemented in the field. So the Loopy Process, it really serves as a crucial bridge between the high-level vision outlined in the city's comprehensive plan during that policy development phase, and then also the specific development regulations that are laid out in the land use code during the code development phase. And then the connection made as we're developing code and how that code is going to be implemented is just as important. And the Loopy Process was a pretty big undertaking in the city. It was done about four or so years ago, and as Emile noted, we had brought forward the first two-year work plan in 2022. So the Loopy Process itself is really intended to facilitate effective decision-making by using a more standardized and predictable process. The process also enhances the transparency and accountability by establishing clear roles and responsibilities amongst the staff team and the departments that are executing on the work, and then bringing our two-year work plan to council and the community so that everyone understands what we're working on, really builds that transparency and accountability. And then having the Loopy Process include a monitoring and evaluation of outcomes phase provides that accountability as well. So the Loopy Process, we find, it really serves a critical mechanism for shaping Bellevue and ensures that we can meet council and community expectations for growth and development. The Loopy Process itself can be broken up into three phases. The color coding here is also noted in the work plan that's going to be presented to you tonight. And the first phase is our pre-launch phase, where we have a real emphasis on how we're going to go about doing our work. And so we provide the information, the annual work plan, on what we're working on, but we also, during the pre-launch phase, begin to scope the project, resource the project. We talk a lot about the engagement plan and our engagement approach, and after we've kind of pulled together all our notes, we come to you all to get the green light, to begin initiating this work and entering into that execution phase. That's where we get into developing the policy, the code, having a lot of technical support, oftentimes from consultants and staff expertise, begin on that environmental process where applicable, and then really engage with the stakeholders on what it is we're trying to change.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second.
Sure.
I just received an email flashed on my screen while I'm looking at your PowerPoint. It says that the audio is on mute for people watching from home, and I don't know if that's just that person or everybody, but I thought we should maybe stop.
We'll check.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
We won't make you start over.
You can get to it.
Okay, thank you, Charmaine. And then, so we talked a bit about the pre-launch phase and the execution phase, and then the implementation phase is also important, that's where we begin to have codes that are ready to use. We also develop some information materials that help people understand what those changes are, both our permit application or applicants, as well as the general community. And then we would, of course, monitor for outcomes and check and adjust as appropriate. So looking back on the 2022 and 2023 work plan, we have here a list of accomplishments. As noted, the 22 and 23 work plan marked a significant milestone, as that was the first two-year work plan that was shared with council and the public. The Loopy Process Improvement Effort has delivered a lot of results by way of what you're seeing on the screen here with the list of accomplishments. This is a list of items that have been adopted by council and are in the implementation stage of the Loopy Process. So we've noted in bold with the initials NRW is Next Right Work. So these items relate specifically to encouraging more housing and affordable housing opportunities. They were among the list of items that the council selected in 2022 to have staff work on with that goal. The list, of course, does represent our collective accomplishments, as much of the work would not have been possible without active engagement from our stakeholders and the wider community, efforts by dedicated staff in both Development Services and Community Development, but also in transportation, utilities, parks, the city attorney's office, and our finance and asset management team, just to name a few departments that have had some work or input on this list here. And then the Planning Commission, of course, for volunteering countless hours to review and shape recommendations that you all consider, and of course, the city council, whose vision, leadership, and action has guided us towards the success that we're seeing here. I will note, what's not included on the list, although it's a very long list, are some of the ongoing work that we are all working on right now, so the comprehensive plan periodic update as one example, Wilberton Vision Implementation as another example. Those were all initiated in the 22-23 work plan, but they are still ongoing, so that's still happening as well. So I'll now turn this to Emile.
So this is a little bit on how we prioritize the work program. So Nick and I and other assistant directors in our two departments start thinking about the work program back about a year ago. So we dedicate quarterly meetings where we look at what the council priorities are, what the city needs are, and also some of the other things coming from the state Puget Sound Regional Council in King County. So we have a lot of drivers for what's actually informing this work program. The comp plan and some of the new targets we have are a big thing that relates to the work, so we have our targets of the 70,000 additional jobs and 35,000 additional housing units by 2044. We also have a process where we do try and wrap up the ongoing initiatives first before we take on new projects, so that's just a best practice, so we're not taking on too much before we can wrap up things that are already underway. You'll see when we go through all the individual projects that we do look for synergies and how projects are going to benefit from working on multiple things together. That's been most evident in the housing work that we've been doing, and then also using the draft EIS and final EIS for the comp plan to cover the environmental review for a number of the other initiatives that we have on the work program. We're constantly trying to be most efficient and effective with things, so we want to get as many positive outcomes based on the level of investment that we and the council, boards and commission, and the community are doing on things. And then the last one is we seek to avoid significant opportunity cost. So a good example of this was the work previously on the faith-based properties, so getting the land use code amendments and policy amendment so that some of our faith-based communities who do want to do something on their property are able to do that with more options rather than less options. So I'll just spend a minute on this one and give you the overview of the Loopy Work Program. This is in your packet, and we will be zooming in a bit more on these, so they'll be a bit more readable, both for you and the viewing public. So in general, this is the two-year layout of our work program. You can see it has it by quarter for this year, next year, and we do show Q1 of 2026. I want to just reaffirm the key here, so when we're in the pre-launch phase, it's yellow, that's figuring out the scope of the project, including what the community engagement plan is going to be. Once we launch something, typically it's by council launching it, it turns into the execution phase, so that's where the project actually occurs, and that's usually the biggest part of each one of these initiatives. And then once council adopts something, you'll see that we do shift into that implementation phase, so it's making sure we have everything ready to go as far as using the policies or plans or codes that we have actually adopted. Okay, so we've broken in the Loopy Work Program into state requirements that we're going to cover first. The next one will be the previously directed projects, and then we'll wrap up with things that came off the previous docket onto this year. So this first set, I'll go ahead and start it off, so the big one is the comp plan periodic update, so we launched that about two years ago. We have a number of more months to go on that one. The big milestone was back in February, we completed the final environmental impact statement here, shown as FEIS, and we have the overall comp plan targeted for a fall adoption by the city council, so we're still on track to meet that targeted date. On the bottom of this slide, since these are all state mandates, we've noted what those exact deadlines are, so I'll just note that for the comp plan, the state deadline is December 31st of this calendar year, and we are seeking to have it adopted a few months earlier than that.
All right, and so moving through the list, and just quickly, as an aside, apologies for all the acronyms in here, space was limited in each of those rows, but Attachment A does include kind of a key. To help you understand that, I'll also try and spell it out as I'm presenting. So with the first item that we're seeing there, the NRW again refers to Next Right Work, encourage DDUs or detached accessory dwelling units, and the Plexes, so duplex, triplex, quadplex, with a mechanism for separate ownership. That was an action selected by council in 2022 as part of the Next Right Work, housing work. And at the same time, or around the same time, the state actually passed two bills, House Bill 1110 and House Bill 1337, that relate to very similar items. So one is accessory dwelling units, the other one is the middle housing, which allows up to four Plexes everywhere where we allow for residential development. And then moving through, House Bill 1293 is Streamlining Design Review. The main takeaway here is that we have to provide for clear and objective standards and guidelines for projects to meet in order to get through our process more quickly. So we're doing work on updating our code according to that state law. And then House Bill 1042 is relating to conversion of existing buildings for residential development, that's the RESI that you see at the end of that. So the resident, this is intended to allow for office buildings to be more easily converted to residential development, so we have to do some code amendments to encourage that type of conversion to happen. And then Senate Bill 5290 is relating to permit streamlining more broadly. This is assigning new shot clocks for development review for different permits that Development Services administers. We also, just as a matter of practice, set aside staff time and resources to respond to future state legislation changes, so that's responding to mandates and conformance amendments needed. So you'll see that show up on the two-year work plan. And then our Critical Areas Ordinance Update is another item that we are due to update, so that work we have beginning in 2025 with completion in 2026.
This next set are ones where we've gotten previously direction, previous direction from the city council. Some of them are ongoing, other ones are going to be new for this two-year window. So the first couple right here, the Wilberton Vision Implementation, we're wrapping up the CPA and land use code work, so we'll be ready to bring something to council mid-year with the target date of June of 2024. The companion effort, we're working on a Wilberton Sustainable District Opportunity Assessment, so we have consultant resources as well as staff working on what we can do from a policy and code standpoint as we develop that new urban neighborhood in Wilberton. The next one is the Bell Red Look Forward, so this is running in parallel with the comp plan update, so we'll be bringing forward Bell Red policy amendments as part of the overall comp plan update in September of this year, and then we would go shift into the land use code amendment work that would be primarily in the first two quarters of 2025.
And then the next item on the list is the Next Right Work Increased Floor Area Ratio for Residential Land Use Code Amendment. This item is intended to address or encourage residential development in our mixed-use areas throughout the city, and with that FAR increase, also bring about affordable housing opportunities. So we'll be looking at the potential for an incentive approach for affordable housing or a mandatory approach or some combination. And then for Bellevue College Comp Plan Amendment and Land Use Code Amendment, there is work under the comprehensive plan periodic update process to establish some policy and land use designation for the college, and then the code work would happen after the policy changes happen, and the code work is really, and the policy work is intended to support that four-year institution's plans. Then the Tree Canopy Land Use Code Amendment and Bellevue City Code Amendment is underway, the Planning Commission is currently reviewing staff recommendations there, and we'll be hopeful to bring you, we're hoping to bring you a recommendation in the spring from the Planning Commission on that item. And then Next Right Work Downtown Interim Official Control Extension is an item that you all have reviewed twice now and approved twice now. We'll be bringing back, there was some interest in looking at different vesting language, so we'll be bringing that back in Q1 of this year. And then Senate Bill 5412 relates to SEPA Categorical Exemptions. SEPA is the State Environmental Policy Act. Essentially, it sets a threshold for which projects have to go through that environmental review process and which projects are exempted from that environmental review process because you have enough coverage at the local level to mitigate potential impacts related to a project. So Senate Bill 5412 further expands which projects might get exempted from that environmental review process, so we're looking at ways to take advantage of those exemptions.
Then as part of the Grand Connection Catalyst Bridge Crossing of 405, we're looking at the land use interface for properties on the Wilberton side and the downtown side to make sure that as we do that design work, we're taking into account the interface with the city-owned properties.
Then the Noise Control Code Changes, that's subject of the next study session, so this really relates to construction noise flexibility as well as changes to sleeping areas. And then our code cleanup is an item that we have on our list every two years, it's really just to improve clarity and function of the code and updates cross-references, et cetera.
Okay, and the last set are from the previous docket, and the first one here is the Great Neighborhoods Initiative, so we did put that program on hold while we did the comp plan periodic update, but the game plan is to relaunch with Crossroads in Newport in September of this year, so we'll be doing the readiness work in the summertime. in September of this year, so we'll be doing the readiness work in the summertime, and that would be, become part of the annual amendment process in 2025. And as a reminder, the last two neighborhood area plans we did were for Northeast Bellevue, Northwest Bellevue, and those were adopted at the end of 2021.
Then the Sign Code Update will begin in Q2 of 2024. The main aim with that update is to provide content-neutral requirements for signage in the city of Bellevue. And content neutral meaning that you should not have to read the sign to understand how you will regulate the sign. This is really responding to a Supreme Court case around signage. And then Noise Control Code Amendment for Leaf Blowers, this is the third phase of our noise code changes for the past two years, or three years it looks like. And so with the noise code changes for leaf blowers, this is really looking at ways to minimize or reduce noise related to leaf blowers.
And the last one is about electric vehicle readiness, so it's looking at some of the new state requirements and seeing how Bellevue might want to go beyond those in doing our readiness work for the compliance with our environmental stewardship plan. So this graphic right here, it takes the, all the initiatives that Nick and I just talked about, we still have those off to the left-hand side, and it essentially erases it over the major plans and themes that we have in the city. So you can see how different projects, initiatives fall under implementing the comprehensive plan, are implementing affordable housing plans that we have at the city, economic development, and then environmental stewardship. And then just to wrap up, these are the current Loopy docket that we have, will be looking to refine these ideas and add to them as we get into proposing the next two-year work program down the road, but you can see things like downtown livability amendments is on the docket. I know there's stakeholders interested in doing that. It would be a 2026 and later. And then things like the Shoreline Master Program Update and the Comprehensive Plan Review that has now a five-year check-in that we need to do by 2029. So Mayor, that completes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you or other council members might have, and just a reminder, this is an information-only presentation tonight.
Very good presentation. Yeah, and again, like you just said, this is just an update from information only. So any comments or questions? Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of quick questions, but appreciate the update on this, very, very insightful, and so was the briefing, but even more so this evening. Couple of quick questions for you. So my first one on the Great Neighborhoods, so we're still following that same cadence that we, boy, that's been a while now, I forget what year that was, but is that publicly facing in terms of which neighborhoods will be tackled next after these two set? Is that publicly facing anywhere so that those neighborhoods understand when that's going to apply to them?
Yeah, we have, we'll be updating our web presence. The next two were previously identified by the city council, so Crossroads in Newport were previously identified.
Yep.
We're going to go back and look at the previous council direction for what you talked about after those two, so that would be the following year.
Yes.
And we do want to come back and kind of refresh the council as a whole because there's some new members here, so you can see what the game plan was after then. It did, it did not lay out a firm game plan for like the next six or seven years, so there's still some input we can get from the council about how you want to phase the rest of the neighborhoods as we, as we move over the coming years.
Okay, good to know, thank you. That seems like a lifetime ago since we did that. Is there any possible way that we can accelerate the Bell Red Luca by using kind of Wilberton as that template or as a precedent? I'm sure there are some nuances, but it just feels like we're reinventing the wheel a little bit here, so I'm just curious, is there any possible way we can expedite that a little bit?
I think what we can do is, Nick and I can take that, that comment back and see if there are any ways that we could accelerate that. I know that we, at least from the staff standpoint, a lot of staff are pretty much booked solid trying to get the
Sure.
the Wilberton and some of these other things, but it's a, it's a fair question to ask, is there, what are the trade-offs with accelerating that Bell Red Luca work? But we can happily report back to you on that.
Thank you. And then just lastly, on EV charging stations, so I know the state's been pretty aggressive in terms of the mandates for city, I'm just curious, we don't have to answer now if you want to come back to me, but what sort of burdens does that put on developers for creating multifamily housing, et cetera? I'm just curious what that cost is, and then if we decide that we want to go above or beyond what the state is asking us to do, what those incremental additional charges are in order to develop those EV charging stations around all of Bellevue? I just want to understand the impact of that.
Yeah, why don't I give a concise answer now, and then we'll add it into our next ESI update for the council in a more thorough form.
Perfect.
In general, there is some, some new state requirements. Bellevue and this part of the state are, they have an adoption rate of EVs right now that's much higher than the rest of the state as you might expect, so we're, we had a really good session with the Bellevue Development Committee to understand some of the issues of going above the minimum state numbers. I think there was a receptiveness to talk more about it and see what the financial implications are, and if you didn't go above, are there retrofit costs that might come up in the future? So it's a, it's actually a pretty complicated
Yeah.
puzzle to put together.
Yeah.
We, we've started a good process, we have more work to do, and we'll make sure we put a good update in our, in our next ESI update to council on what's going on.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Emile.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, just, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief things. I really appreciate the presentation. We had a chance to have a briefing earlier. It's really helpful being the new guy here, or one of them at least, helps to kind of understand the process a little bit. I'll look forward to staying in touch because this is a good start, but I can assure you I need a lot more, so thank you for that. I'm just kind of curious, so I mean, this seems like a lot of work, it seems like a really good schedule and some good accomplishments, but if you, for whatever reason, can't stay on schedule with some of these plans, do you come back and let us know that, or when are we checking back in and are we going to kind of know if we're on track?
Yeah, I can start out and then Nick can add on. You know, the, the, I think it's good to have a schedule that's laid out, so we, it's good to kind of not just have the list of projects, but actually where they might play out. We often get asked, you know, is there capacity to work on all of these things? And what Nick and I look at is the staff capacity, so we have a pretty good idea of doing a small, medium, large, very large project, how much staff time that takes. There are other variables, as you might expect, so council time, planning commission time, other board and commission time. Over the past two years, actually getting consultants on board, there was, a lot of the consultants were pretty booked solid, and then the community engagement is a big one too. So we will, we continue to monitor all those different variables in getting projects done and do report back on things when we do need more time. So the, the final EIS was one where we did get a lot of comments from the community on the draft EIS, and we needed more time to actually follow up on, on responding to those comments and doing the technical work, but made, made sure that the community and the council especially knew that we needed a bit more time on that one.
And I would just add another feature that we've kind of built into our work planning. For some of these projects, we've actually, we build in a midpoint check-in with the council. Trees is a good example with the Tree Code Update because that is a pretty big undertaking. At that time, we can also check and adjust, so we'll, we'll give you what we're hearing, we'll also know what the timeline is, we'll give you kind of our, our take on whether that's realistic based on kind of that initial pass through the community, and then have you all affirm kind of that schedule and direction. And so we've found that to be helpful as well in making sure that we're at least reporting to you all on, on how things are going, and we try and build that in. And also, we look at phasing projects from time to time, so if we see there's kind of an early win opportunity, we might break that off into a phase, and then once we get to the completion of that first phase, we can also update you on how are we going to do with the second phase based on this first bite that we've taken here, so.
Okay, I think I really would look forward to that and understanding how we're moving along, and I think maybe to just kind of follow on to Councilmember Nguyen-House, I think we do have some projects, such as Bell Red, where if we do get off track, you know, we want to consider, you know, with these trade-offs and, and if some additional resources might be warranted to get us back on track in those projects. So I think these high priority ones, for sure, making, making sure that we're communicating and doing what we need to do together to keep them on track, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes. Thank you, Nick and Emile. Seems like this is a continued great partnership between two departments that you're just doing this really important work, and I can see that the Loopy plan is very ambitious yet important, and I think you can hear from my colleagues that perhaps we are also asking you to push a little bit more on some of these items. So I guess what I will start with is some things I really appreciate about seeing in there, and, and that is the Bellevue College expansion and being able to work with them because hopefully now with stable leadership, that's not changing, that they are moving forward, and to the degree that we can understand their expansion plans and work in partnership with them, it's really important. The electric charging, like my colleagues were saying, I'm thinking about whether that effort should be accelerated because with the Inflation Reduction Act, there is a fair bit of money there in, in tax credits, and so to the degree we can take a look at that work of electric vehicle charging, there may be some funds available at the federal level that we can take advantage of. And then, then I'm going to say on the accelerating side, on the House Bill 1293 Streamlining, it seems to me that even though it's not required to be done until June of '25, to the degree that we can, you know, accelerate the, the streamlining effort pieces, that I think would be really helpful, because we're already working on 5290 on the permit reviews, so if the other one could also be brought forward a little bit, I think that that would be helpful for the whole development community as well as us. And then I would agree with both my colleagues about Bell Red, if we could find a way to, from lessons learned in the past, several Lucas, to find a way to be more streamlined in that, I think everybody would benefit from that. And then the increase for housing, if there's any way to finish that before the end of '25, I think that's another area where we know we need both more housing as well as affordable housing. And, and then lastly, on the Grand Connection, this is about the bridge and then the two landing sides of the land use interface between the Civic Center and Wilberton. I just want to make sure that that timeline fits in with the preliminary design on the bridge, because I'm really trying to envision how we can design the middle without fully understanding what the two endpoints are going to do from the standpoint of land use. So if we could take a look at that as well to, to better understand that, otherwise, I really like the fact that these other things are in there, because my understanding is, you know, downtown livability took five years, shoreline master planning took five years. I mean, there's got to be lessons learned to reduce that amount of time, but getting it early in the, the post-2025 Loopy work plan would be important to kind of figure out how to dovetail that. So if you could help us understand, so from a budget standpoint, is there an opportunity for you to come before us and as part of the budget and, and either ask for some limited duration employees or more budget to hire consultants? I think at least from two of my colleagues, we, we could, we would like to move a little faster from the standpoint of some of this Loopy work.
Okay. So yeah, thanks for noting the, the things that you do like, Councilmembers on, and then the, I have a, we have a list of things that you have a curiosity if they can be accelerated, so Nick and I have noted those down. On the Grand Connection, we have synced up clearly with the Grand Connection team, but we'll make sure that future efforts on the, the Grand Connection project do talk, talk more about the landing spots and the key thing about that interface and what we need to do now versus what can, you know, happen as we get closer to 100% design of that catalyst bridge.
Yeah, and, and just so that, on that bridge, to be clear, we had spoken about using alternative delivery, so we're not, so that would mean that we're not intending to go all the way to 100% design before hiring a contractor, so
Right.
you know, the more that we understand the landing points of the two ends of the bridge, the more important it'll be, so that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, and then Nick and I will be thinking during this calendar year, when we're writing up the budget proposals, how we might get things that could accelerate come 2025.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is a very, very comprehensive, it's been a while since we've had this kind of thing, I really appreciate this. What I'm, I'm looking at, and I guess we could spend the next five hours talking about, should we move this one around, move this one around, and do you have enough staff, what's it going to cost, and which ones, and all. It's, I mean, it's good to have us show how this is coming out, and some of these timelines look a lot further out than we thought they were going to be and all. I think what it, when it all comes down to it, and, and is that you have really put together, and I think this is one of the best ones I've seen in the last 12 years, is really how, how all these are coming together, and, you know, we think in terms generally about what we're going to do this year, what we're going to do the next year, and we're talking about, you know, something three years out on a lot of these things. And it's a very, very, it's very heavy, a lot of those pieces. And obviously, these are planning things, sometimes we can get stuff done quicker, sometimes it's going to take longer. One of the questions I have is, and I think you've laid all this out, and it'll come with the things we have to work on, is really looking at how effective, and are we staffed adequately? How are we working with the boards and commissions? How do we work with the council and have the appropriate conversations about this? We all have ideas about how we would like to say, I'd like to build actually the Grand Connection or East Rail next year instead of two, three years down the line. So it's, I think it's good to, to give ideas about, I, I know you're talking about doing this, this time, but we'd like to see it done this time. But I don't think we, we want to go down that line where we start trying to move all those things around in a sense. But I do hope we continue to have more coming back and telling us where we're coming, going on this, what we need to have from the council in terms of how do we, are you okay with where we're going, that type of thing? Because it's, it's very comprehensive, and we, I think we can adopt this as a very, very progressive, very, a plan that will get this thing done, and we have to have a plan and we have to work on that plan. And it's always, you always want to look at something you want to do and think, can we move this in quicker here and push over here? So I think we'll have some of those conversations, but what I'm expecting is you come back to us and say, okay, this is where we are, and we're looking at maybe should we work on this plan or this plan? But I do think overall, this is something that we have in place, and it's very, laid out very well in terms of how it all comes together. And I think, not only for the, for the new council members, but the ones of us who have been on here for a while, it's always amazing to see how many things we're doing, and, and this is just, it's not the whole thing this city's doing. So I, I really appreciate the way it's been laid out, and I think it's been one of the most informative and coordinated planning, work plan set out. So I'm, I'm very excited about doing this. We have a lot of work to do, and we need to have these conversations back and forth and have a lot more, I guess, communications with each council member, working with the commissions or boards and, and working with you, you know, having briefing and everything. So I think it's just amazing what we've got laid in front of us, and I'm really excited about going and actually getting this done.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. Great, great work.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very impressed with what staff is doing with this system. You know, it's a very effective decision-making process, and, you know, we heard earlier You know, it's a very effective decision making process. And, you know, we heard earlier, you know, the new council members say, wow, this is what an informative tool. It's for council members living around for a long time also, because we have so many things on the table, so many things have accomplished just in the last two years. And I don't know how you can do that without such a, you know, decision making process. You know, we all have our own ideas, you know, whether it be new projects or old projects we carried over, you know, like Bell Red Corridor many years ago, more recent ones, you know, Grand Connection and EV charging system, you know, even more recent. But at the same time, we have a lot of new projects coming to us, like housing, you know, house bills, house requirements, state right legislations. So all this has to fit in somewhere. And you're doing the best you can. The staff is managing it. So it's very, very informative, very good information. But if we all have to tell you what we think they should be on the table, on the docket, you probably won't be able to do any, anything. So it's, it's a good, it's a really impressive process you're working on. So I just want to be sure though, because it is such a wonderful process. And the city of Bellevue have so many great initiatives that we know we want to do, right, to serve the city of Bellevue. We've come all this way because we have done great things. And now we have additional projects coming to us that we need to also tackle, you know, good mostly and bad sometimes. But it's all going to be included. You have to work on it. And so it's a matter of prioritizing priorities. So how do we let you know how the council work with the staff? How do we set up these priorities, right? What trade offs do we make? We've heard all the comments from, you know, our fellow council members. So it's, it's very challenging. It's important. But I hope you, so I'm not going to give you any project. Many of them are mentioned already. But if I load on you for whatever project I think is important, and every council member does that, you know, what, what, well, how can you, how can, how can you react to it, right? So, but it's a process. I think we need to be better, understand better, communicating with council, with the staff, with the communities. And we can do some prioritization. If we get on them earlier enough, then we can look at the situation we have today, and what flexibility do we have, and what changes would we have to make, and what do we have to prioritize as we move forward. I think this is, you already have a process. I think if we understand this, if we work toward that, I think we would have a much better, well, smoother, more efficient and effective process to do all the initiative we want to accomplish without having to, you know, maybe figuring out, you know, what do we really be agreeing on, what you should be doing, what we should be doing. So I, again, thank you. It's a great, great process, great tool. And we've got a tool that we can work with. It's just a matter of how we can be getting together. You, you brief us on a regular basis, let us know, and show us what changes we can make, or flexibility we could have. Then we make decisions, and you can be free to do them without being encumbered when the, well, you know, what is it that we want? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for a great presentation. It was amazing. I think the beauty of being last is all of the smarter people here, my fellow council member already asked all of the great questions. So I'm not going to bring the resource allocation and capacity, I think it has been mentioned a lot, but I just wanted to emphasize that we need to consider Planning Commission workload and public engagement. Already, the comprehensive plan update is such a technical process that the public already complaining that it's too fast. Planning Commission has already, I think, three months, they have three meetings that they are not really signed up because they sign up for two meetings per month. So I believe there are three months that they have three meetings because of the amazing work that we are going to do. And I think Councilmember Lee is mentioning, okay, what have, if we have another thing to add, if you're maxed out already, if the Planning Commission is already maxed out, if the public is already maxed out, how can we add that? But I think I wanted to emphasize on something Councilmember Hamilton mentioned. The report mentions quarterly meeting to assess progress, progress and adjust the work plan. Just wanted to know the mechanism of that and what mechanism will be in place for the public and council to provide feedback on the work, work plans, progress and potential adjustments.
Yeah. So as, as Nick mentioned, for many of these projects, we do report back to council. Something like the comp plan update or Wilberton or even Bell Red, we're, we're sending emails, putting out public information. Nick and I are probably going to think about how as a, as a overall body of work to be better about public information that's for the community, for the council and other stakeholders who want to kind of follow this all along at the high level so they can see how it's all coming along. But then clearly if they want to dig down into a specific initiatives, we have a range of different stakeholders who might care about a few of these things, but not want to follow all of them together. So it's a good, good comment about the public information and how to get this word out of how we're doing.
So, exactly. So I think it would be amazing if you have a project plan that what you showed us, a very long list, but then we show the progress on that from the plan, how much we achieve, how much we should have achieved. We can be more, I think, clear on that, not just by email about one topic to us, but for the whole public and council to have a list to see what was the plan, how much we achieve, and how, what are, what are the obstacles, what are our mitigation, and if there are changes, we can see that. Thank you.
Okay. So the, this kind of is similar a little bit to what everybody else has said. But, you know, these updates take years to get through, as we see. And we've been doing years previous to tonight. And so I want to make sure that we are updating our value system as we do these projects with the new information that we get and as our city evolves. So for instance, Emile, you and I were in on this modular home presentation. And I wonder, you know, as we look at some of the land that we didn't think was buildable before, if maybe if we use modular development, if it now is a possibility. So I hope that we are finding ways to incorporate new technologies and and information as it comes to us.
Yeah, as we're, as we're developing the draft work, work program over the course of the year, we look at council priorities, what the Bellevue needs assessments are showing, housing assessment, and then also emerging trends. So that's a perfect example of an emerging trend and how does that fit into the, the policy and code work that we're doing at the city.
Terrific. Thank you for answering that. Okay, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more study session item. And this is for direction. So City Manager, could you please introduce this one?
Thank you, Council. This is a presentation on the proposed amendments to the city's noise control code relating to construction exemptions, which you heard a lot about in the oral communications. Staff is requesting direction to prepare the code amendment for action at a future meeting. And once again, from Development Services, we have Nick Whipple, Code and Policy Director, and Matthew Menard, Senior Planter. So I'll pass that over to Nick.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Council. So we're just going to launch right into an amendment that is shown on your Loopy work plan. So this is the Phase Two work for our noise control code amendments. This is a, a twofold project. So we are with this Bellevue City Code Amendment looking to address or respond to some needs that we're hearing related to construction projects. And then we're also talking about sleeping area requirements as they stand today and how we're suggesting those potentially be amended. So tonight, this is your first touch on this topic. So we are seeking input and direction for us to prepare the proposed Bellevue City Code Amendment for action at a future meeting. Our agenda will touch on the objectives for this code amendment. Matthew will walk us through the specific components with this, with this amendment, the process that we've undertaken to get to tonight, and then our stakeholder outreach. So first with our objectives. So with our noise control code generally, the idea there is to minimize public, the public to exposure of excessive noise. We are also looking at ways that we can, within that kind of overarching objective, support development in the city. And the construction noise amendment specifically, we're introducing some examples of construction noise activity that may be permissible through a permit as part of this process. We're also looking at streamlining our permitting process through this code amendment, codify a notification process. That's something that we lack today. So this amendment would actually bring about more awareness of when we are approving exemptions that allow for noise to happen outside of the, the construction hours. And then an objective related specifically to sleeping areas is that we have heard some feedback from the development community around cost to build multifamily housing to the current decibels that we require by code. Matthew will also note kind of how we compare to other jurisdictions on that matter. But one of the objectives with that specific amendment is to help lower the cost, but also balance that, the public exposure to excessive noise. So without further ado, Matthew will walk through the proposed amendments.
Thanks, Nick. So we currently have a noise code that regulates construction noise. It regulates lots of noise, but we'll focus on construction noise today. Right now, under the code, construction noise is exempt from that noise code. So you're allowed to make construction noise between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM on weekdays and 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM on Saturday, Saturdays. You're not allowed to make noise at all, construction noise at all, on Sundays or public holidays. There is also a difference for single family additions or remodels, which are authorized until 8:00 PM. With this amendment, we are proposing that the weekday number be bumped to 7:00 PM. As you heard through many of the comments earlier, there are some requests from the construction and development groups to push that to 8:00 PM, excuse me, and push some time on the weekends, just a little bit earlier until 8:00 AM. In addition to these hours that we are allowing for construction noise, we also allow construction entities to apply to us to extend these hours under specific circumstances. Currently, those circumstances generally relate to mitigation of transportation impacts and public safety. There's also an extension for government facilities and schools. With this proposal, we are really looking to clarify those exemptions. So right now, it's not particularly clear in the code. The way the code does the list is a little bit confusing. So making sure that that's very clear for the public and the applicants. And then adding a few additional exemptions that you could apply for through the Development Services Department, that being mitigation of safety hazards, certain construction tasks that are going to take longer than 12 hours to complete. So we've heard from construction entities that there are certain items such as a large concrete pores, which could take more than that allotted period, and it's very difficult to stop and start those procedures. So allowing them to do that all in one go in a longer period than we would currently allow is a big efficiency gain for them. It can also mitigate some transportation and safety impacts. And expanding our exemption for bad weather. So right now, we allow construction entities to expand those hours to stabilize slopes before winter. We are proposing that that be expanded to any extreme weather event, really for the benefit of public and construction worker's safety. This also adds a application process, as Nick mentioned, and a public notification process. As with the last amendment you heard from us, we are really focusing on transparency with all these amendments. So making sure that the neighbors are aware of when these exemptions could happen. So when there's going to be construction noise later into the evening and when that is authorized. And we think that will mitigate some of the impacts of this extended hours. We also do think it'll maybe mitigate some of the calls we are currently getting, noise complaints for these extended hours where the neighbors are not aware of the allowance for that, that's been applied for. And then they get, we get a noise complaint. And because these are after hours noise complaints, it does go to the Bellevue Police Department. So we want to make sure we're not tying up their resources with things like noise complaints when the noise is actually allowed and been allowed through an application to Development Services Department. And switching gears from construction noise to talk about the sleeping areas noise, currently we allow no more than 40 decibels or lower in sleeping areas if the building line has a external noise of greater than 65 decibels. Those buildings that are going to be close to major roadways, for example, would have an exterior noise greater than that threshold and then would have to meet these current noise requirements. This 40 decibels is lower than HUD and EPA recommendations and is also lower than entities such as the State of California use. We are proposing 45 decibels, so a 5 decibel increase for the allowance in sleeping areas, which is essentially the difference between a refrigerator compressor and a rainfall. That 45 decibels is consistent with the HUD and EPA recommendations and what other jurisdictions are using. Again, places like the State of California mandate 45 for those sleeping areas. It does also mean that all of our internal areas that require these thresholds are identical. So no difference between sleeping areas and non sleeping areas. We've done significant stakeholder outreach for this code amendment. We did direct engagement with the Bellevue Development Committee, who were in support of the especially sleeping areas noise change, but in support of all of the changes. We've reached out and had meetings with construction firms to get a better understanding of their experience with the noise code, how we could better administrate the noise code, and anything they wanted to see changed. As you've heard from much of the comment this evening, they are looking for an expansion of those hours that they are exempt from the noise code. We also reached out to the Bellevue Downtown Association, the Bellevue Downtown Residents Association, who I did get confirmation, they posted on their Facebook page, and the Spring District Residents. We have not heard back from any of the residents associations. We did get an email from the Downtown Association with some questions included that were answered. We also posted this on a webpage. The webpage will include things like frequently asked questions. We included how to file a noise complaint, what that process looked like, information on the code amendment, what's changing with the code amendment, what's not changing with the code amendment, and then our contact information, if you wanted to get in touch with us for any reason. This also went out with our DSD newsletter, which has over 12,000 subscribers. So this has been widely publicized to the general public. And we really focused in on those groups where we thought this would have the biggest impact. So those residents around downtown in the Spring District, where you're going to see the most construction, the largest construction projects and the longest duration construction projects. And just to make it clear for everyone and for the public, currently, our construction noise complaint process, any violation will be investigated after a noise complaint. So we're not proactively going out and looking for noise violations. It would be neighbors generally that would call us and tell us that there's construction activity going on, creating noise, that's a noise violation. They are after hours, so they are handled by the police department, as I mentioned. And those complaints can be made by calling the non emergency phone number for the police department or the My Bellevue Customer Assistance Portal. The process for this, there was Phase One, which was completed in April of 2022. We've done outreach since then, this being Phase Two of the noise control amendments. There is a Phase Two, as Nick mentioned with the work plan earlier, which is going to be the leaf blower noise amendments, which is slated for Q3 of 2025. This is the council study session, so this is the first touch with this item. We are looking for input from you all this evening and direction to move this on for action at a future meeting. And with that, Mayor, I will hand it back to you. And we are more than happy to answer any questions you all have.
Okay, terrific. Deputy Mayor, let's start with you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation. Thank you for changing your seats to bring some variety. So you mentioned this, you mentioned that you did a significant outreach, and you have not heard any single resident says they have a problem from extending the hours to 7:00 PM instead of 6:00 PM. That's correct.
That is correct.
And then in your historical complaints that we, from noise complaints that we hears, has there been any complaint about the construction noise? And what are those constrain, what are those complaint in general? Can you tell us about that? Can you tell us about that?
Sure. So this is going off of what we've heard with those meetings with the construction companies, so what they've dealt with, with noise complaints. There are certainly noise complaints. It sounds like often they are in downtown. And it also sounds like often it's based on a visual of there being construction workers on the premises. Sometimes I'm sure they are legitimate noise complaints. Often, it sounds like potentially if there are some lights going on, or if they're sweeping, or if there's some sort of finishing up that's happening, that's not making a significant noise, those can also generate complaints. So, you know, downtown especially, right, you have residents in very close proximity to these construction projects, there's always opportunity for friction there. And so there are noise complaints that come through that process.
And the complaint is just that they are reporting there is a loud noise that's preventing that resident from sleeping, from putting their kids in bed? What are the main, is there any data that tells us what are the main concerns when they put a claim or complain about the noise?
I don't have any specifics on that. The police department might, as it would go through them, but I'm not sure if they do or not, as it is a sort of a non-emergency line, so I'm not sure how they track that through.
And your recommendation to extend to 7, not to 8, because we have heard that there are a lot of interest to increase that to 8. Why are your concerns to do that?
Yeah, again, it's about balance. You'll hear this from me a lot. So we're trying to balance the needs of the residents with the needs of the construction companies and the needs of developers for a little bit more flexibility. Later you push into the evening, the greater the impact you have on quality of life. So right now, it's 6:00 PM, so just pushing that an hour, we've heard, does make a significant difference to the speed of construction. But I think, really, as this is the study session, that is something that's certainly open for discussion this evening. We've heard that, you know, as you heard from public comments, that pushing it to 8:00 PM can really cut down that construction time and get some of those larger tasks done without having to apply for that extension. So it could make a really big difference to construction companies. But for us, it was trying to balance that quality of life versus a construction efficiency.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, this is, we're going in a really good direction to follow up on what the Deputy Mayor just said. The, I think that going to, you know, to 7 hours is rational, but what some of the people talked about, what it comes up is there are times when it, when they're doing something like pouring concrete or other things where they need to go over, and if they, I assume we have ways to accommodate that. And certainly, you wouldn't want to go to 8 hours all the time. That is, that is really, seems not rational. So there is a way that if certain things come up that need to be done in a little longer time period, you can do that.
Yeah, so...
If they communicate with us and get permission, in a sense.
Yeah, so going back to the list of exemptions, one of those ones that is proposed to be added through this amendment is individual tasks that take greater than 12 hours, 12 hours being that period from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So that's a new exemption that we are proposing to add to try to allow those activities to happen, not all the time, but sporadically. Part of the update with this as well is to allow them to apply for multiple ones of those exemptions under a single permit, so it's a little bit easier for them to do those activities. So we do think it's covered through that permitting process. That is an additional step to just the flat exemption for the hours. Obviously, they'd have to apply to us, and that's approved by the director or their signee. So there is a bit more work assigned to that, and there's also that public notification with that as well. So there is a slightly higher burden on the construction companies if they do want to go down that route.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think it's a really good step forward. And it's hard to let people know that if they go a couple more hours, another hour, maybe there's a, you get two weeks earlier not hearing any noise, but they don't think about that. But that is a good factor. I mean, it's a good balance to get, have them get that done as quickly as possible. So it sounds very good. I think you've reached a good rationale for this, and I think it, I hope we get that put in place. I did have a question on the leaf blower. Why are we waiting so long? It's 28, I think you said, before we get to it.
Councilmember Stokes, we have leaf blowers slotted for Q3 of 2025, if my memory serves correctly.
It's the 25, okay.
Yeah, and so it's kind of where it fit within the Loopy Work Plan, as we were kind of looking at a lot of the council priorities and other needs. As noted in that earlier study session, a lot of competing kind of projects here, but that's where we landed that one.
All right, good, good, okay, that's good. The sooner the better. Okay, no, actually, I think what you set up is a very rational approach on this and should help a lot, both with the developers, but also with the public.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I really like this kind of work because these seem like some kind of simple, easy things we can do that can really kick things into gear. I think the discussion about striking a good balance, that's really important. You know, as I look at this, I really think that we do need to consider going a bit further and extending our weekdays to 8 o'clock. You know, that final hour of construction really is kind of the wind-down hour. So I think we're inclined probably to have a little bit less noise in that time anyhow. But if we're looking at maybe a 15% to 20% increase in the speed with which we can complete some of these projects, I really think that is substantial. And we talked earlier about our regional competitiveness as it relates to design review. I also think it applies here. When we look at Kirkland and Redmond, Redmond allows till 10:00 for construction in some cases, Kirkland goes to 8:00 now, Monday through Friday. So I think this does help us from a competitive standpoint. Also, too, you know, just shortening the duration of some of these projects. So you might get a little more noise during the day, but you're going to get it for fewer days. So I think that has a lot of appeal. We're also talking about the kind of jobs that are pretty high-wage jobs, good family-wage jobs. You know, if you look at a number of projects and you multiply that by the number of workers, we're really looking at a pretty substantial improvement there. And I think, too, looking at just construction efficiency, you know, as it applies to all kinds of developments, and really, when I looked through this, I was really thinking about affordable housing projects. So looking at providers and developers of affordable housing, I mean, this would be a substantial improvement for them. Affordable housing, 15% to 20% quicker, I think it is really worth looking at. As was pointed out, we're really not getting any complaints or any negative feedback on moving ahead with this. We've really gotten just positive feedback, and I think encouraging us to maybe step up a little bit more. So I do, I think it makes sense. I think this is a relatively painless way to support our economy on the one hand and to really kick our housing production into gear on the other. And knowing going into the project that you can plan for these longer days, I think makes a big difference, and it's certainly preferable to having these kind of one-offs where you apply for an exemption. You know at the beginning, you have it planned, and you get down to work. So I would really like to see us move to 7:00 to 8:00, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 6:00 on Saturday. Thank you.
I'm going to go next, just to counterpoint Councilmember Hamilton, because he lives in this beautiful little enclave, very far from downtown. And I live in downtown, and I get all the emails from all my neighbors just going crazy because of all the construction noise. And so I know that you have spoken with a lot of neighborhoods and neighborhood associations, you've still spoken with a lot of businesses. And so I'm not as eager to change those hours, just from the feedback that I've received and the experiences I have had. Nine months of hearing construction outside your window is a really long time, and even though it would speed it up, those long days of it can really get to people. So I think you got to find that balance, and I know you're thinking about it that way. So I just encourage you to continue to try to find that balance. Let's see, you know, this is, to me, a residence-centered proposition. It's certainly informed by the construction businesses, but we're, if we didn't have residents talking to us about this, we wouldn't have any limits on what people did. So I, I just want to go back to Slide 10 for a minute. And we talked about what, how the complaints are handled. I would love if we could have a point person who's assigned to a certain construction site, who has to stay there for half an hour after this, you know, it's supposed to close down, in case that it's continuing, so that there's actually somebody, people can call to report it. That's something that I get a lot of information from downtown residents, that they really don't feel, even though they can call a non-emergency number and they can put it on the My Bellevue, that doesn't seem very responsive to them. So I'd love to consider having more of a point person with a phone number that we can call, and that will actually be knowledgeable about that particular site, for a little more oversight. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for the presentation and your, you know, analysis and recommendation. We all know, you know, why we want to extend hours, the benefit of it, and we know, we heard from the developers that they want to do it. And it's legitimate, right, because of the many reasons, as I mentioned, we want to be competitive, we want to keep the cost low, and all that stuff. So we've heard from them, we know the benefits. We also know, you know, the reason why we set up codes, laws, is to respond to the residents' complaints. If they don't complain, we have no, we don't need to set rules, but they do. And I, that's why I was looking for some data, some objective data. You know, you mentioned that the Downtown Resident Association you have contacted. So I'd like to know, what are the responses, what are the numbers, you know, in percentages and so on? And that'd be very informative, that'd be useful. We heard that the mayor had heard from some people, but hey, you know, so I think we need to have a more broader, if more, if not, you know, more objective response. And because if they don't complain, again, I said it before. So I think, as you mentioned, you know, it's a balance we have to provide if we heard from both sides, and if we hear that there's reason, you know, for both sides, we need to provide a balance. On that note, I would like to ask, you know, the reason why the residents complain, I like to know why. It's not just why, because they don't like the hours. I think they're not going to complain unless it's a quality of life issue, right? I mean, they are disturbed, they are being disrupted, whatever it is. And I think we need to know. And we probably have human engineers who understand why people can put up with certain things when, right? I mean, from maybe 8:00 to 5:00, they are not home, they're busy, they're doing things, and a lot of noise, maybe they can tolerate, right? But if it's after certain hours for certain people, for maybe the majority of people, that's what we're concerned with, that's what the city does. We cannot make everybody happy, but we need to balance that. Maybe, you know, 4:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, you know, they're not going to be considered as quality if they are disrupted, disturbed. Same thing applies if their activity is affected, you know, in summertime, the days longer, maybe there's longer parties, they don't mind having more interruptions at night. But in the wintertime, maybe it's not the case, you know? Everybody goes to bed earlier in quiet hours, so things are changed. Same thing applies to weekends and weekdays. So I think we might, that's just a novel idea I want to suggest. Maybe we should consider, you know, talking to your consultants, what makes people unhappy during what hours, from what, right?
May I ask a clarifying question? Maybe you've already asked this?
I don't know, I'm just asking.
And so if you can respond to his... Can you respond to his desire to have that information be considered? And maybe that's something we can add, or maybe it's something you've already asked?
It's a suggestion, you know? If you have done it, if you know it, I want to hear. If you haven't, you know, you need to let me know or us know whether it's something that would be, you know, of merit. I'm not going to tell you exactly what you have to do, what you don't have to do. If we all do, and you're wasting both of our times. Okay, so this is what I have to say. So I need to have those information, then we understand what it is ultimately, then we can make the judgment to provide the balance, so that people are not going to complain, and the developers will be happy, and we accomplish our goal of building lower costs, whatever, you know, that's reasonable. Thank you.
Any thoughts or comments on that?
Any thoughts or comments?
Sure. We can certainly try to find all the data we can on the number of complaints we are receiving for these. And if it is cataloged why they are complaining or what the nature of the complaint is, we can bring that to you as well. I'm not sure if we have that data or not due to the non-emergency nature of the situation. We'll follow up with both Development Services Department and the Police Department to see what we can find with that.
The police, right?
I'm not sure what we can do on the sort of psychological study of when noise works, but we can, we can see what we can find is out there to look into that as well.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, you know, thank you for this. I think that this is a very challenging discussion of trying to figure out how to balance, you know, the community with excessive noise, developers, efficiency and safety. And I appreciate the fact that you looked at the parity. So it was helpful to me to understand that in Redmond and Kirkland, who are our neighbors, that they actually already have APM, and that in Seattle, it's 10:00 PM. So that's helpful from the standpoint of getting an understanding of what's happening in other communities. And then, I guess the part that I really want to understand is, so this is related to noise generating activities, so only, so it would be civil corn shell type activity once they get inside the building, this wouldn't really apply, is that right?
Yeah, so this is going to relate directly to construction noise. We do have a definition of construction noise in the code, which I don't have directly in front of me, I don't know if it's in that strike draft, but it is.
But for the most part, that's what it's related to, right?
Yes.
And then, in addition to the current proposed extending just by the one hour, we're also adding in there that if you are requesting an exemption, you're required to provide two-week notice, is that right? Is that a new thing that we're adding that doesn't exist today?
Yeah, so all the process additions to the code are brand new, so we have no current process, so that code to require that they give us two weeks' notice, they would also be required to provide a calendar. If they are doing multiple noise exemptions under a single permit, that's all new.
And if I could, Councilmembers on, just clarify, too, with the addition of the public notice, we also put a caveat, unless otherwise provided by a director. We heard specifically with our internal outreach from our Transportation Utilities Department, that that can sometimes be challenging with emergency work, or kind of those unanticipated events that have to happen, and that lead time isn't there. And so we've kind of built at least a potential off-ramp to that notification, the two-week notification process, and instead kind of tailor it to what's appropriate, given maybe it's an emergency nature situation that they're responding to.
So the reason I'm asking is because, actually, I'm in the construction business, been there for well over 20 years. And this is an unprecedented time from the standpoint that we have workforce shortage, workforce shortages, we have delivery issues. So the idea that contractors are going to be able to exactly predict two weeks out when they're going to be wanting to have an exemption to be able to work longer hours, I'm not sure that's necessarily always realistic. And so I'm just concerned that if we are not looking at parity with our other cities, and we go to, we stay the same, or just go with the 7 o'clock, and then these additional restrictions for contractors, I'm not sure it necessarily fits what the current climate is around construction and the challenges that contractors go through. So I guess for me, I'm looking at this as the, if we're going to put the two-week requirements in there... in there for asking for that exemption and the notice, then I would be more inclined to look at the proposal of going to APM on weekdays and starting at 8:00 AM on Saturday because it, it's, that's actually its own set of balance to say, if you're going to deviate from that for the exemption, we want something from you with the two-week notice, which sometimes can be really difficult because you think that, that piece of equipment's going to show up, so you're going to get a bunch of work done. And then, you know, there's a snowstorm in Chicago and stuff doesn't show up. So I just think that when we look at balance, there's a holistic balance perhaps to look at. So I might just ask my colleagues to consider that it's the, it's the balance of the notice that we're adding as new and then the, a little bit more time for contractors.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I feel like we're, we're, we're missing a little bit of, of data this evening. And, and I like the mayor's suggestion, I mean, a direct suggestion of having someone there at a certain time, but I think we need to somehow get a better process in place for tracking the number of noise complaints that we're receiving. There seems to be confusion about who collects it when, if it's BPD or if it's code compliance. I guess My Bellevue, we could track that, but we don't seem to have any definitive numbers. Or else, given the fact that we did the outreach and really didn't get much back from, 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 from residents, one might assume then this is not that big of a deal for, for, for most folks. Now, maybe, you know, if you're, if you're in downtown, maybe that's a little bit different. But again, I go back to the outreach that you did and there didn't seem to be any urgency around it. So, so that would be my first request is that we put some process in place going forward, we can better track this and then make adjustments in the future if we need to. But given that lack of data right now, I would be more inclined to, to look at the, the expansion of hours beyond that seven o'clock and go to eight o'clock on weekdays and then start an hour earlier on Saturdays for all the multiple reasons that Councilmember Hamilton and Zahn already mentioned. That just makes sense to me with the ability for us to pivot if needed. And I'll look to you gentlemen to say when that would be, maybe after six months or, or a year to reanalyze the data and to see if we've gone too far, we need to dial it back or not. But at this point, given what we know and the importance of these projects for, for, for housing, for getting this work done quicker, and the, the fact, you know, this is one of those cases, I think we need to have parity with our municipalities around us. And that doesn't mean we need to go all the way to 10 o'clock to Seattle, but I think eight PM is a very reasonable request, especially given the, you know, that last hour again tends to be, and although there's visual cues, Matthew, as you mentioned there, but that last hour usually ends up being the, the wind down, the cleanup, the noise is minimal at that point. So of course, there might be some visual indication still, but, but that would be my, my inclination is to, is to, to move forward again, the extra hour during the weekday and then starting an extra hour early on that Saturday. Thank you.
So why don't we go around again? We'll start with the deputy mayor.
I have one follow-up question, two questions. Is what it mentioned about Seattle and Redmond correct? Are they, have the construction hours till 10:00 PM on weekdays everywhere in Seattle?
So it's not everywhere in Seattle, there's locations specific to Seattle, I'm just pulling up my chart here. So comparing it to Seattle, specific areas in Seattle, the more dense districts are allowed 10:00 PM, the lower density districts are, it looks like seven to seven on weekdays and then nine AM to seven PM on weekends. Redmond, seven AM to 10:00 PM every day except when impacting residential zones. Those residential zones will be seven to seven Monday to Friday and then nine to six on Saturday. They also prohibit on Sunday and holidays like we do. Kirkland, as Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, seven to eight PM on weekdays, nine AM to six PM on Saturdays, prohibited on Sunday and holidays. So generally, it's a mix between sort of impacting residential, but seven or eight PM is sort of the standard. The more urban you get, like Seattle, the more you're going to push towards 10:00 PM or Redmond where you're not in residential districts, they will also push towards 10:00 PM. And I will say there are state laws around this and those do cut off at 10:00 PM before you start having to do larger processes. So that's sort of going to be the sideboard for us there.
Thank you for clarifying that. If we, so what, just a process, if we say, let's just evaluate going to eight PM, then are you going to do another, all of the outreach that you did again to say now all of the residents, we were joking, it's not seven PM, we are now evaluating eight PM? So are you going to do all of those again and come back? What does that process looks like?
Yeah, so we won't tell them we were joking, but we will reach out to them again and basically say, hey, we've gone to council, they've asked us to look into changing that number from seven to eight PM. Please let your constituents know that we've made this change and if they have any questions or comments, please send them in to us or council, especially if this is going to action. We'll also let them know the date that this, the meeting would be for this to be adopted so they can come give their input directly to you as well.
My last comment is, it is correct that City of Bellevue doesn't have any data of the complaint about the construction noise, but there are many researchers that identify the negative impact of residents' quality of life due to construction noise. So those researchers are out there, we can all go find them. I do believe that extending, extending that to eight PM deliver the project faster is a very good productivity issue and efficiency in the construction, shorten the disruption, limit the time of the construction is predict, is more predictable. All of those are correct, but I think there would be an impact in residents that, especially those that are noise sensitive, like young children, elderly individuals or those who have a pre-existing health conditions that now they are going to, should now manage to extend to from six PM historically to eight PM. So I think again, it's a struck between balance of what we can do for our economy and development and also help our residents to have a quality of life that they deserve. I think even extending, the other thing that I was thinking when everyone was talking is the disruption of evening activities. The extended hours can impact some enjoying time outdoors if the construction is still going all the way out. I don't know, open windows for fresh air can be impacted. And the last thing I wanted to ask you to do is, I read a statement today from, I think, NEOP that, it was very interesting that they were saying that the traffic could be benefit by going to eight PM. And I was, if you can do any modeling to validate that, because assume we have downtown, all of the project or Wilberton in future, and then if at the same time we let all of the construction workers leave instead of seven PM at eight PM, is that benefit the traffic, worsen the traffic? I think that would be a great additional information to have for a future evaluation. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes, anything to add?
Yeah, I think actually going to eight is a rational way to go on this. And it's, it's not, there's no answer that's going to appease everybody. Most of this is directed towards downtown areas or certain areas that are, we're not talking about somebody going in the middle of a, of the community and start building something and being there at that time with the noise as much. We're talking about larger facilities, basically. But I think it's going, you know, seven, going to eight is, is rational. And again, I think there is value in not having the, the, you know, project going out further time period. You can't get people to understand that, that will be, because it's just kind of promising something to them. But I think it's a rational and a good compromise on this. And going to 10 does sound, sound kind of just a little bit overboard on it. And it's, the, the, the building is different in Bellevue than it is in other cities around us. Seattle's different, but, so I, I'm happy to go with, you know, the seven, I mean, to the seven to the eight hours on the regular days and then the earlier, less on, on, you know, the weekend. But I do think it's, there needs to be some language that has at some points where there is some special extended time for work needs to come in there too. We have to take care of that. Okay.
Appreciate the conversation, nothing to end. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, well, so I will say that the downtown does have a community, has quite a few people living down there. And it's interesting to me that these other cities that we're looking at that have extended hours beyond what we're proposing have caveats for when it's near neighborhoods. And so I would be totally supportive of increasing the amount of time of construction to match what Redmond is doing, for instance, if we also copy the caveat of proximity to neighborhoods. And I don't know, you know, what the results of that would be, how, but downtown is a huge neighborhood. So, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that come back and have that discussion. Okay. Councilmember Lee, anything more to add?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Without answering the questions I was asking, getting data, finding out from the residents that are going to be affected, we, we can't just arbitrarily say that's going to be seven, eight, nine, 10, six, five, I don't know. It is not the way it is and we're going to change it. And so I really wanted that, you know? Whether we're going to match Seattle or anybody else, that doesn't matter to me. We are Bellevue, we're not Seattle, we're not Kirkland, right? We have our own economic needs, we have our own resident needs, we have our own whatever that's unique to us. And we've been around for a long time and the people living here has been around for a long time. So I would really like to get some real good information. Maybe you can go to the downtown or Belred if you can, residents and, you know, ask them, have a discussion with them like we are doing now, you know? Give them the benefits, we have plenty of them we talk about, right? We do. And they have a right to decide whether it's a benefit to the city or not because they live here, you know? And so we say this is benefit and this is what's going to happen to you. And if you don't object to it, hey, that's good. If they do, then we have to make decisions. And that decision we want is basically, you know, what are the complaint, why are they complaining? And maybe there's some qualitative life issues that we talk about, you know? Let's figure that out. Then ultimately, we have to make the decision. But without all those information, you know, my decision is, you know, what you recommended. It's already a compromise, it's already a decision that we made, you know? And I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I know that a developer would like to have a lot longer. Yes, I'm willing to do that as well, but that's going to be part of the decision that we can maybe provide to the residents. Hey, you know, if it doesn't cause any disruption, you haven't complained about it, and if your life, quality of life doesn't get affected, maybe just go to eight PM, nine PM, right? I mean, that's part of the discussion. And I don't think we have had it with the residents. And I would like to have that before we make those changes that you recommended. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn?
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate the, the discussion as well. I, I actually had a different question, which is, you know, I know that there's a lot of technology improvements in the construction industry and a lot of the noise comes from backup alarms and different safety in the equipment. So is, I think as maybe a separate piece to take a look at what, what our contractors are using and whether, because I know that even for backup alarms, there are ones where the noise that's being emanated is not emanating upwards but more of, right? To the people that you're trying to actually alarm about what the equipment is doing in terms of its movements. So maybe that's another thing to think about is that if we could work with the contractor community about the noise generating activities and whether there are some things we can do there would help also balance the, the piece we're talking about here. That's all, thanks.
Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, no additional comments? If I'd like to make a motion?
Okay, let's hear your motion.
I'm going to direct staff to bring back an ordinance amending the Bellevue City, Bellevue City Code to update the exempt hours for construction noise from seven AM to eight PM weekdays and eight AM to six PM on weekends. Clarify the current construction noise exemptions, create a public notice process and modify the average allowed decibel levels for sleeping areas for final action at a future meeting.
I would like to amend that motion to include restrictions around residential areas. As we saw in, and that would just look at what, that would look like what's being proposed by staff tonight, would maybe seven AM to seven PM around residential areas and nine AM to six PM around residential areas. And if there's not a second, then.
One second, could I make a minor change? Rather than restriction, additional consideration?
However, would, how is it worded in Redmond, would you say?
I don't have the exact language. The way it's written here is impacting residential zones. So just to make that clear, that is going to be different than residential areas or, you know, residential uses. But we can look further into exactly how they administer that because I don't know that off the top of my head.
Is this enough of a motion for you to work with?
Yes.
Okay, so you second that? So let's vote on my amendment, all those in favor of, okay, go ahead.
So I don't have enough information about what exactly Redmond actually has to vote one way or the other. You've read off pieces of that. So I'm, I, I would like to see the language in front of me so that I'm clear about what exactly I'm voting for.
Well, we're asking them to bring something back for a final action that would include enough information for us to have that discussion. This is not a final action.
Can I add this one a second? I don't intend to be copying exactly what Redmond is saying. I want to comply, I want to live by the intent, that we need to have some consideration for the Bellevue residents that live in the area that's affected. However, that you say is, I don't, you know?
Mayor, if I may, how I understand your motion, and please correct me if we're misunderstanding this, is to look at extending those hours according to Councilmember Newenhouse's motion with the caveat that we look at ways to minimize kind of those construction hours to what the staff proposal is today in those areas that are adjacent to lower density residential areas. And so we don't actually have an idea of what that will look like in code, so it's really helpful to get that feedback in a study session so we can bring back a proposal that shows just that approach for you all to consider then at a future date and choose to take action at that time or provide another redirect potentially. Is that how you're articulating that?
That's how I see it as well.
Additional information?
So we have, we have, I think, just one amendment on this. So did you want to comment? Yeah?
Well, I just want a clarification. So as I understand it, we would be creating some kind of a zone such as Belred or Wilberton where we would have these longer hours where construction could take place, for example. But if it was close to a low-density area, then they wouldn't be able to, the construction noise couldn't go on as late. So for example, downtown would be the area where you had that extra time, but maybe just in the part of downtown that's not, you know, budding right up against a neighborhood, is that right?
That is an approach that we could take into consideration. I will say it will have some challenges in just how we kind of structure that. Uh, I will say it will have some challenges in just how we kind of structure that. So it, if it seems complicated tonight, it might seem a little more complicated the next time we come in front of you. But we can certainly take a pass at trying to address that concern that we're hearing.
I, one question is, uh, we're not, it's not very clear what we're talking about in terms of the developers and where the ones who are wanting this to be done are building. Is it, is these out in the neighborhoods or is this mostly around downtown or a larger, uh, the noise and all that stuff comes from a larger buildings and all? And that's where, that's where you're going to get this. So you're not going to come up on Woodridge and, uh, you know, they, they build a, you know, redo a house or something there. And that's, that's very different from coming to downtown. Uh, and yes, we do have a big neighborhood there, but it's people who are in a, in a more urban area. So it's a complicated thing, uh, and how, and I'm just saying, this is one of the things to look at too is what, who's, who's really impacted by this and what effect would it had? And what's the benefit of having, uh, a little longer time with this but have a shorter time period to get things built, all those?
Why don't you put slide four up because that kind of addresses what Councilmember Stokes, it accepts the single-family additions and remodels which are authorized until eight PM. So that's a different treatment. But, um, I would say that for the Surrey Down neighbors who live right up against, um, an area that has heavy construction, so, and the Viewcrest neighbors and their pockets of residential, this could be really impact, impactful, so.
In the letter that we received from the chamber, also, they requested what I think Mayor mentioned as an amendment, that they are saying they want nine to eight, um, for downtown, East Main, Wilberton, TOD area, Belred, uh, for efficient, um, except if it is very close to a low-density residential zone. So that's actually very aligned with what the request from chamber came this morning.
So low-density is, uh, seems to be the key on this, low-density areas.
Yes, and, and, uh, what very close means is also a detail we want to.
It's something to think on.
Yes.
So can we, um, take a vote as to whether we approve the amendment, which is to consider the proximity to low-density areas with the extended time that, uh, is in the motion that Councilmember Newenhouse did propose? Can we just vote on that, yes or no, Councilmember Zahn, or do you want to?
Well, just to make sure I'm clear, you said proximity, but are we saying that you're talking about immediately adjacent or across the street?
I don't know, staff's going to bring it back. We're going to have a bigger discussion. I, we are asking them to consider this before, when they bring it back to us. And they can do the analysis and they can look at how the best way would be to handle. And then we'll have a discussion and then we'll vote.
The point is that we have two-step action. We approve this basically, but like staff's going to bring back a consideration in form of amendment that we are proposing now. And if we agree to that, then we can talk about it, then we can vote on it.
Do we know the amendment?
Then this, this vote should be carried.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor?
I've seconded, you say, you've asked me if I still want to second it.
I seconded it already.
No, it's already seconded.
No, 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 but there's a discussion on this, so I may withdraw my second.
Councilmember Lee?
I was.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
We have an amendment of the motion.
Yes.
And I wonder if we're ready to vote.
You want me to second it?
You already did.
No, actually I didn't.
I'm ready to vote, but nobody, but I will second it anyway.
You second the first motion?
Whether you want me to second.
Councilmember Lee seconded the amendment? So all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we got through that. Now we have the, um, the initial, the initial motion. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are done and the meeting's adjourned.